Push on.
All right, well, welcome back to yet another school year. I can't believe the summer went that fast. And I'm just so happy to see everybody's smiling faces and looking ready to go, well rested, maybe? Yeah, I'm getting maybe. But great to start off yet another, another year here. So thank you for joining us at the Board of Education this evening. Please go ahead and mute your cell phones or anything else that might beep or buzz while we begin this meeting. Today is Tuesday, August 12th, 2025, and this meeting is now called to order at 5:33 PM. And would you join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance? All right, thank you. Would anybody, sorry, would any board members like to make changes to the agenda? Okay, seeing none. All right. We'll go ahead to our student, I cannot read today, Superintendent Report. Welcome back, Brian.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. It's great to be in community with all of you tonight to kick off the 2025, 2026 school year. I am feeling incredibly hopeful. And I know that this year is not, is going to be nothing short of inspiring for what we are able to accomplish together and in partnership with our students. As all of you know, we get a chance to welcome our young adults and young children back into our buildings this week. We have our Transition Day tomorrow and officially the first day of school on Thursday and Friday. And we have been welcoming our educators back into our buildings over the last week or so, and many of them who are here today. And I just want to say thank you for doing what you do. I know you're going to have a fantastic school year because of your brilliance. We had so many incredible things that happened over the course of the summer, like we didn't shut down. We did a lot of work and a lot of celebration. And I don't know if anybody had an opportunity to check out our biannual summer musical at Fort Collins High School, Les Mis. But it was nothing short of fantastic. I think it was Broadway-esque in a lot of sense in terms of the talent that was shown by our students. There are so many staff members that commit their time in the summer to making sure that that level of excellence is possible, not just for our students, but for our broader community. And so I want to thank all of the teachers, volunteers, and parents and leaders who were involved in that effort. There's too many to thank. And I also want to give a special thank you to the PSD Foundation. Without their financial support, events like that simply would not be possible. We're actually going to show you a quick win video to actually help celebrate that one more time.
Les Mis is kind of a story about perseverance and about rebellion in the face of uncertainty and injustice and kind of fighting for your rights.
Everyone from every school coming together, working as one, and just that theme of unity between all the cast and the crew in the pit.
It doesn't take a person, it takes a people. It takes everybody coming together and realizing a common goal of, hey, we need to help each other out. It's dark, it's gloomy, we're the miserable, but at the end of the day, there's still hope in those cracks.
Things like that are what makes PSD unique and special and an outlier, in my opinion, when you look at us compared to a lot of other school districts across the country. We have so many people coming together to make sure this is a successful year. Members of the board and members of the community, earlier today, I had a chance to break bread with members of the North Fort Collins Business Association. And they were celebrating the 19th anniversary of Project Smile, which is started in PSD, actually under the leadership and the request of former principal Brenda Hartman from Irish Elementary School, who went to our local business leaders 19 years ago and says, I need help because we have so many students in our school at the time that have critical dental needs and are either underinsured or uninsured. And the community rallied together and raised so much money where now we are able to have Project Smile in seven of our elementary schools. When they first started this program 19 years ago, the students who were screened, 80% of them had critical dental needs at that time. That number is now down to 20%. So it's been on prevention, it's been on education to the families and the communities. And I am really, really proud because of the effort of PSD leadership and community support. That program in partnership with Salute Family Health is now going to expand to 13 different locations across the state of Colorado. And they are implementing it the PSD way. They are implementing it the way that we intended, and I just couldn't be more proud to be a part of that work. I'm going to give a special thanks and shout out to Ron Lotenheiser and Don Butler, who in addition to Project Smile, amongst many other people, also do the annual Coats and Boots Program. And just last year, they were actually able to fundraise where we were able to provide 1,100 brand-new pairs of boots and coats to many of our families in need across our entire district. So the community support here is just tremendous, and that's another reason why I feel so hopeful and optimistic that this school year is going to be another great, great school year. We have 49 traditional public schools, and if you've had an opportunity to drive through our community over the last couple of weeks, you've probably seen many members of our operations team, outdoor services, facilities, and construction working around the clock to make sure that our lawns are well manicured, that our playgrounds are ready to go, and that all of our schools are ready day one for all of our children. I want to give a really special thanks to all of the hardworking people that were involved, but especially our operations team. As a result of their effort in partnership with other construction firms, we're delighted to be opening two elementary schools, O'Day Elementary and Beatty Elementary School, who have air conditioning for the very first time this year. Yes, that brings us down to 30, yeah. We have, we have 30 schools to go that still need air conditioning. And as we look at the forecast, we all can agree that Mother Nature is not our friend right now. And that is the reason why we built a heat protocol in partnership with our labor groups that we will be implementing on the first two days of school as a result of the forecast being extremely, extremely hot. I want to acknowledge this to Superintendent, these decisions, we, I don't take them lightly. They impact tens of thousands of families, but it is really, really important that we continue to work together to strive to have incredible working conditions, but also learning conditions that are safe for all people that are involved. And so I just want to appreciate everybody's compassion, empathy, and shared understanding as we have to come together in a community to navigate our changing climate. For any of our families who are looking for more specific information around our climate protocol or around the decisions that were made for Thursday and Friday of this week, I would ask that you please kindly go to our school district website. The last thing I'll share is that we have a pretty robust agenda tonight. Today is one of the opportunities that we have to present to the board our Unified Improvement Plan as a district. And it's where we have an opportunity to see how the work and the vision of the board cascades from the boardroom to the classroom, how it aligns to our strategic plan. Our outcomes are not by accident, they're by design. We have a lot of work still to do to disrupt this proportionality with many of our marginalized students in our district. But I'm incredibly confident in the work that this district is taking on to stay focused around our three system priorities: literacy, mental health and belonging, and ensuring not just some, but all students graduate and graduate with options. So we look forward to sharing with you some of our progress, as well as entertaining many of the questions that you have that are thoughtful to help move this important work forward. Let's have a great school year, everybody. Thanks for allowing me some time.
Thank you so much. And just looking forward to all the wonderful things that will come this year. And I'm just really excited too about two new schools with AC. So I see a lot of smiling faces out there for that. So yes, I think a lot of us are excited about that. So welcome to the Community Comments section of the board meeting. The board desires to hear the viewpoints of all stakeholders, including students, employees, parents, guardians, and community members. Public comment is designed to address issues, not personalities or personnel matters. Please keep your concerns and comments focused upon the district and appropriate for a K-12 audience. Please note that the board does not generally respond to remarks made during community comment. Our lack of response should not be construed to mean that we agree or disagree with what is said or with a description or interpretation of events as presented by any speaker. Further, even if some remarks may be factually inaccurate, we generally do not choose to respond or correct the record here because formal board meetings are not the time or place for back and forth dialogue. As we begin this community comment session, let us model for our entire community how to listen and how to interact respectfully, even with those with whom we disagree, for we all have the students' best interests at heart. And so this opportunity is for, for public comment is for members of the community who registered to speak by the designated deadline. Those people will be called on to make remarks in the order that they signed up. And each speaker will be allowed three minutes to address the board. And we'll start off with welcoming Anna Labetta. Welcome.
Good evening. I want to thank you for the opportunity to stand here and comment this evening. Over the past two school years, I've often had more to squeeze into my comments than three minutes has allowed. And as a result, I've often had to minimize the niceties. I'm here tonight to ask you to please not further reduce the opportunity to public comment by only presenting the opportunity once a month. As someone who has sat to the end of a number of late board meetings, I can understand the desire to minimize the time in this room on board meeting nights. However, public comment has rarely been the root cause of a lengthy meeting. I believe it sends the wrong message to your stakeholders to narrow the window of opportunity to come to you publicly. I believe it will only further erode trust I hear you saying that you are trying to build with the community. It has been said that there will be continued opportunities to engage in smaller settings where back and forth conversations can take place. These sessions are also beneficial, but it is not an apples-to-apples comparison. I believe the answer in this case should be both and. As an exasperated stakeholder who attended a year's worth of community engagement sessions asking for help and made every effort to seek help at a district level before making my way to this, to my first community comment, I can attest that they serve very different functions. Public comment allows stakeholders to come, to come before both the full board and the head of the district efficiently, under one roof. It holds space for public scrutiny and accountability for both the commenter and the district. In the words of one sitting board member, "The space it creates is sacrosanct, regarded as too important or valuable to be interfered with." I believe the best way to reduce the amount of time needed for public comment is to be genuinely, genuinely responsive to your public commenters, to ditch the trite and dismissive email response and engage meaningfully with commenters whose concerns are found to be legitimate. As one public commenter once said, "Silence can be earned." Constructive criticism, when viewed through a positive lens, can be a huge asset to most any kind of work. As a district stakeholder who is open to broken trust being restored, I will say that public transparency, honesty, and accountability work in your favor. They are not your enemy. To the contrary, I believe a decision to reduce public input could have unintended consequences in precarious times. Please consider not making changes to public comment at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Sabrina Herrick. Welcome.
Some of you all have told me you want to cut public comments to speed up meetings, but there's a problem with that logic. I've already seen blatant disdain for public comment by our previous board president that has nothing to do with this conversation. In fact, I personally called him out for fist bumping Kingsley when a computer glitch meant there were only eight public comments instead of nine. But there are some signs of improvement since then. One of you has described them to me as a painful but necessary reality check, and one of you has told me that you appreciate public comments because they can't get buried in your inbox like an email can, meaning public comment is the most reliable way to escalate grievances to all of you. So why are we, why are we discussing cutting our best escalation method? A while back, someone had to comment on my behalf because you blocked me from public comment for criticizing your promotion decisions. They said, quote, "Looking good is what matters to you. Somewhere along the way, you forgot that step one of looking good is doing good," unquote. Let's talk about that. Over the course of the two years I've been commenting, I've seen some interesting comments to you and your predecessors. Among other things, "Your spending habits have been questioned alongside implications of conflict of interest. You've been accused of hiding unpopular decisions from the public. One of your department heads resigned three days after you received a recording of him admitting to a multi-staff retaliation effort. Your staff have been accused of minimizing and committing child abuse, and in one case, of having a child wrongfully arrested. Very recently, your staff were accused of misconduct and disrespecting disabled children in their care by turning them into reaction memes." Now, none of that is good for optics, but those bells can't be unrung. That's all on YouTube for review. Going back to the meme text for a minute, there is a very simple step that could have kept Danny from ringing that bell, a phone call. Unlike Danny, district staff could ID every child and contact their parents and say, "There was an incident involving your child. An investigation has been done, and steps have been taken to prevent future problems. Would you like to have a meeting about it?" So many of those bells could have, could have been managed with transparent, respectful conversation, and so many others could have been managed with critical reflection and policy review. Instead, we got, "Oh, by the way, you're being gagged," in the bottom corner of an employee-only newsletter that has now been backtracked into an agenda item due to backlash. You know what's worse for optics than all those rung bells? Limiting opportunity for people to bring grievances to y'all's attention, forcing people to address grievances in emails that will get buried, and hiding evidence of the grievances behind the paywall that is Cora. Look good by doing good, y'all. Find a better way to make your meetings more efficient. Three minutes isn't enough time for all my thoughts, but one of you heard my suggestions yesterday, so I'll leave that part up to you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Taylor Unwin. Welcome.
Unlike Sabrina, I think mine is going to be a little shorter, and I probably won't run out of time, but I'd agree that, I think all of you know I could stand up here all day long, and three minutes is really not even enough as it is. Good evening. My name is Taylor Unwin. I've been in this boardroom many times to give public comment over the years. You might have noticed that I've been absent recently. Part of it is because honestly, I gave up in trying to work with the board on solutions for my family and others like us, so I actually decided to work with the district directly instead, and Julie has been a great partner in that, and I appreciate her time in helping us. I have been the last member of the public in the room with you here at the very end of the night before, and even then, I appreciate that you stayed until the conversation was done. Tonight, I'm concerned about any suggestion to limit public comment. Many districts around the state have actually taken initiative to strengthen public comment, including not only allowing, but encouraging public comment in a variety of ways. Telephonic and Zoom comments are a popular form of doing this. Littleton Public School District, for example, allows this. Allowing more forms of public comment promotes accessibility and allows a more diverse body of speakers to escalate issues or concerns to the board, and I thought that diversity meant something to us here. Time and time again, I've asked this board to work toward building trust with the community instead of dismantling it. If you remove and limit public comment, you will be doing just that. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Jeff Arthiheidi. Welcome.
Good evening. Tonight's first reading on Policy 3.13 to limit comment, public comment to one meeting a month is being presented as if it's a new decision, while it's not. A core request uncovered a June 13 internal message from your chief of staff directing employees to implement this change before the public ever heard about it. By July 14, the staff newsletter presented it as if it were already policy. This isn't governance in the sunlight, it's choreography. Meanwhile, a formal complaint has been in your hands for over 100 days. That complaint concerns the February 14, 2025 Legislative Subcommittee Meeting where a quorum met behind a digital access barrier violating Colorado's Open Meetings Law. Board Policy 3.12 requires that this board refer any written complaint to the superintendent for investigation and report back. However, in this specific case, for complaints directed at the board members themselves, the chief of staff again stated that PSD staff cannot receive complaints about board members, which means the complaint and enforcement of it is entirely in your hands. Why does this matter so much? Because it fits a pattern. On August 14, 2023, a quorum of the Legislative Subcommittee met in an online meeting and developed phishing expedition language aimed at restricting public records, working with former PSD director and now state legislator Kathy Kip, lobbyist Ann Barkus, and Casby, to which you currently don't have any contract for services. That same language later appeared in Kip's bills HB 1296 and SB 77. One failed, and the other was vetoed by none other than Governor Polis for its chilling effect on transparency. The pattern is clear. Hold barrier meetings. Coordinate the political allies and lobbyists. Turn those discussions into policy at the state level, or when that fails, here at home at PSD. That's exactly what we see now. Failed ideas for limiting access to records, limiting when the public can speak, and they're being implemented locally, piece by piece, without honest public debate. The sequence matters. Rules for public participation go to the heart of the community's ability to speak on record. When decisions are made out of sight and then rolled out before a public vote for the first reading, it becomes symbolic and not substantive. So if this board really wants to rebuild trust, start with process. How about you refer and investigate the February 14 complaint under Policy 3.12 and report it back to the public? That's what you should be amending tonight, not restricting public comment. Here's the reality. When it's about taking something away from the public, like their chance to speak, it happens in weeks. When it's about holding the board accountable for breaking open meeting laws and using closed meetings to coordinate anti-transparency language, it drags on for months or doesn't happen at all. That's not transparency, that's control, and control is not the same as trust.
Thank you. Next up, we have Dani Lawrence. Welcome.
Thank you for the opportunity. Following my comments in May, the fallout from Fort Collins High School, I've been aware that community members have written to you requesting the cessation of my constitutional rights to free speech in these public meetings. So when I heard the board was looking to reduce public comment for time preservation, I did an examination of past public comments. Last school year, there were 100 speeches given in 18 school board meetings, totaling 306 minutes, roughly five hours of talk time. Of the comments that were given, 42% were related to the services of disabled students in our school district. 16 staff members spoke up, 50% of them for paraprofessional working conditions serving those same disabled students. Students with disabilities also spoke up about their experiences as well. In over 50% of those meetings, public comment took 15 minutes or less. Is saving 15 minutes a meeting worth the continued isolation of a community that's been crying loudly for help for years? Later, in tonight's Agenda Item 10.1, staff again demonstrates statistically the slide in graduation outcomes by another 4% for this population, even further below state average. Are we okay with the problem or just unwilling to hear about it? If the parents who are repeatedly coming here and commenting are causing the problem, why not just work with them? From an action committee, form an action committee and hear them out. Wouldn't working with them be a better solution than degrading public trust for everyone else because you feel bad after we speak? If I am honest, I would rather be working with you privately so I wasn't exposed or exposing others because your staff and superintendent refused to engage with me. This past year, I watched our district trespass crime victims for protesting. So parents can't speak up now? They can't protest? They can't get help? What do you want us to do? As a board, you are the accountability partner here. I'm sorry, it sucks. I sympathize with you. But you asked to be elected, and we voted for you. Voting to reduce public comments is voting to silence a specific protected class that was just gaining some long overdue awareness. Board Policy 3.5 indicates that you owe the community loyalty, and I'm asking you to show it, please. Please vote no on the proposed amendments for Policy 3.13 later tonight. As a side note, the district's resolutions also took the same 302 minutes, and I'm talking resolutions, not recognitions. Five hours, five hours with 27 of them passed. If Casby recommended their removal in March, why are we paying $25,000 annually to ignore their advice? Couldn't you guys just save some valuable meeting time by considering that as an option? In your email tonight is the district's OCR Resolution Agreement for the violation of my son's civil rights. I included it so that you can understand the process and the outcome. There is nothing litigious here. I have no axe to grind. There is no money to be made. We only sought training for your staff, and it's clearly needed. In closing, I wanted to say thank you, Mr. Kingsley, for taking an ask. Sorry for an investigation. Seriously, I appreciate you. It's the first sign of hope that I felt in four years of making public comments here, that somebody cared about kids with disabilities. I know it wasn't, and it still isn't easy, and that I hurt many students for asking, and I am truly sorry for that. But I do thank you for respecting the ask, and so thank you all for listening.
Thank you. Thank you. Next up, we have Jess Vestal. Welcome.
Tough act to follow, Dani. Thank you, guys, for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Jess Vestal. I'm actually from Littleton School District. I wanted to try and give a little context for why the recent issue within the special education that was investigated was as upsetting as it is. It is an issue that goes beyond policy and speaks more to the culture. You can't write a policy or train someone not to be a bad person. But as far as the students go, the absence of their awareness does not erase the moral weight of the action. Harm is not solely measured by the child's comprehension in the moment. It is measured by the breach of dignity, violation of trust, and the morality of the act itself. To use a person's image for ridicule, especially someone in your care who may not be able to fully understand or object, is to strip them of their agency and reduce them to an object for amusement. This is wrong, not because the individual consciously suffers in the moment, but because it disregards their inherent worth as a human being. These children exist in a position of heightened vulnerability. Exploiting that vulnerability for mockery is not neutralized by their lack of awareness. In fact, it reveals a deeper level of moral failure because the staff's objective to mock solely relies on the child's inability to defend themselves or self-advocate. Awareness is not the prerequisite for harm, the offense in the action itself because it violates the principle that all people, regardless of ability, deserve to be treated with respect, protection, and dignity, especially while they're in a classroom. Furthermore, people who advocate for children deserve protection too. This board has a duty to protect those who champion students' rights. I think we can all agree that that's what we all should be doing. When you fail to defend the voices speaking up for your most vulnerable students, you are not just turning your back on the advocates, you are turning your back to the children themselves. If you all recall, recall, quite some time ago, I offered a free staff training to your district, which is still available, and I wonder, had this training been available in the spring to your staff, if it would have positively affected the culture? I can't imagine that you all enjoy the exhausted parents coming in here time after time pleading for the bare minimum on a very regular basis, so much so that the little time that they have been granted is being fractured. Solutions are out there, and I'm asking you to seek them out.
Thank you. Thank you. Next up, we have Deborah James. Welcome.
Hi, my name is Deborah James. I'm 66, I'm 66 years old. I'm currently a sub in the district. I have been for the last two years. I work all ages K through 12. I've recently been hired into the home bomb program as needed. For this new school year, before subbing, I was a paraprofessional for 14 years. I again worked K through 12, mostly in special ed, not exclusively. Both of my adult children went K through 12. Pooter School District, I volunteered regularly, and when they were in elementary school, I've done a PSD After Three program. I've done summer school three times. And I'm just going to go out on a limb and say I have literally been in hundreds of Pooter School District classrooms. On 10/4/2023, I subbed as a para in the ILS program at Fort Collins High School. I would not be here at all, talking about or sticking up for any other program that I have subbed or worked in over these years. When I went into their classroom for the first time, I observed energy and interactions that were positive and caring. The teacher, Amy, was calm, capable, had a light nature to her, and just had a natural ability with the staff and the children. There was a particular para named Chris, a man whose smile, I just, I always think about that bright smile throughout the day.
Tapra, I'm actually going to ask you to go ahead and not, we're not, you don't, you're too close to the mic for one thing, but also names, and we also want to make sure that, that we are respecting people's privacy, and we also want to make sure that we are not talking about personnel matters. Personnel matters cannot be brought to the, to the board. Personnel matters need to be discussed, so with, with staff, sorry.
Can I, I can't talk about what I observed in this classroom?
If you, if you do it without names, we can go ahead and
Okay, okay. I will say that there were paras in the
You're still a little close to the mic, sorry.
There were paras in the room that were recent graduates, that had been graduates in May, that were now hired as paras in the classroom, and it was really lovely to see. There, I went to two unified classes where the regular, average student, whatever, we wanted typical, were in there with the ILS students. They were paired up in PE. They were having more fun than anyone else, any adult could have with them. I went to art, touched my heart, what I saw between two high school young men and the interactions. And I, I hear what the person in front of me said is that the students are unaware of what's going on, going on right now, which is true. But they will be aware that when they get off the bus on Thursday, that the people that I saw taking care of them in a lovely way won't be there waiting for them when they get off the bus. I can imagine there's going to be disappointment, there's going to be fear, and there's a whole body of knowledge about these highly individualized students. Oh, I gotta go. I guess it's over.
Okay, I'm sorry. We're
It says one second. It says I'm done.
There you go. Okay, so sorry about that. Yeah. If you want to take a second just to wrap up.
Well, I just had suggestions about, you know, bringing more people in, parents actively being brought in, you know, and encouraged to volunteer in the classroom, specifically with nonverbals. I thought, from being in that classroom, I thought we should foster paraprofessionals in the high school.
Okay, thank you. Thank you so much.
You only heard that. Okay.
No, no, it's just, the time is up. I do realize I took some time explaining things, so I was giving you a little bit more there. So thank you. Next up, we have Wendy Bergman. Welcome.
Thank you. I am a proud social studies teacher at Rocky Mountain High School, and I want to speak tonight about the loss of the Mental Health Services Professionals Grant. When I started in 2020, the biggest issue I faced with students stemmed from their lack of mental health support in a time of chaos and social division. They lacked the skills to work through their emotions, and we didn't have enough qualified staff to help them process and to give them support. As a classroom teacher, it is not my role to, it is not my role to support my students' mental health in this way. I'm not a social worker, I'm not a counselor. I'm pretty great at building relationships with my students, and they know that I genuinely care about how they're doing. I should not be the one attempting to teach them these regulation skills as I am not trained or qualified. Things have changed for the better since 2020 because we have increased the number of mental health professionals in our schools. Most of this increased capacity has come from the grant program. At Rocky, our fellow sees hundreds of students in individual and group settings and provides the appropriate support for these students. This is replicated at at least 23 other schools in our district, and the loss of the social work fellows and interns on this grant is a devastating blow, not only to our district's ability to meet students' mental health needs, but our community's capacity for mental health care. There are people, these are people who significantly impact our students. Last year, I met a student in March who was in two of my fourth quarter classes. On like day three, our fellow came to talk to me to let me know that they would be working with the student during class because they were supporting him, they were supporting my student through a possible expulsion process. because they were supporting him, uh, they were supporting my student through a possible expulsion process. Because of the work of our fellow, um, and the ability to connect that student with the mental health supports, the expulsion was deferred. With the fellow's continued support, my student not only attended regularly, but passed two required-for-graduation classes with A's. When our social worker leaves in January, our students won't get that support. When this social worker leaves in January, our students won't get that support. We are pushing qualified and dedicated people out of our school district, and our students are starting school on Thursday with less social workers in the system as many of the fellows have already left the district to find other work or moved into full-time roles. This is increasing the workload for the other mental health professionals in our schools and will lead to higher caseloads and more burnout among those who remain. I wish the district would have fought harder to keep the grant or pushed state leadership to include it in the lawsuits that have already resulted in releasing already-promised federal funds. I understand that we're preparing for the loss of federal funds, and I know more than most the impact our chronically inadequate state funding has. But we need these social workers in our schools. We need more mental health professionals, not less. And I look forward to seeing the district's proposal for permanent increases in mental health, uh, positions because our students deserve it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Candace Mosher. Welcome.
Good evening, Board Directors and Superintendent Kingsley. My name is Candace Mosher. I am the proud parent of a recent Pooter High School graduate and a tomorrow incoming Pooter freshman. Um, I'm a veteran elementary education teacher and the proud president of the Pooter Education Association. Um, I'm here tonight to welcome all educators back to school. What our union does for you is work alongside the district to ensure that educators' voices are included in decisions that impact our teaching and learning environments. And beyond, our union members are advocating for professional development and to be, excuse me, for professional development to be relevant to all educators and streamlined so we can be dedicated to lesson planning and instruction. In the past, our union has worked with colleague, or your colleagues, to advocate for more planning time for elementary educators, integrated services teachers, for increased extra duty pay for elementary and secondary education. And most recently, we established and modified heat protocols that are being implemented as we speak. What our union will do going forward, this is just the beginning. We want you to know that your best interests and the well-being of educators and thereby our students drive every decision that we make. Your educator union siblings are fighting to ensure that we have a sustainable funding structure across the state, and we will continue to ask district leadership to stand alongside us to work towards growing a thriving community. At a time when the people's voices feel like it is being suppressed across the nation and even at a local level, know that your union, PEA, will do everything in its power to ensure your voice is heard. PEA is strong because of our members. To learn more about PEA or to get involved in matters that affect educators and students, please follow us on social media or talk to your building ARs because your voice matters.
Thank you. And last but not least, we have Sarah Vaughn. Welcome.
Last and least, okay. Good evening, Mr. Kingsley, Board Cabinet Members. Uh, first of all, thank you for calling the early release days on Thursdays and Fridays, uh, or Thursday and Friday. Um, those of us in non-air-conditioned buildings are very, very grateful. As some of you know, uh, my name is Sarah Vaughn. I'm a middle school math teacher in the district. I'm also on the Pooter Education Association Heat Committee, PEA Heat Committee. Being able to give public comment at the board meetings actually allowed me to connect with you and with our union in order to be part of this committee. One thing I've learned from being part of this amazing committee is how important it is to have multiple voices in the room when decisions are being made for the district. Our heat committee, for example, includes teachers from elementary, middle, and high school levels as well as district leadership. We have been working together to create the district heat policy, and we were able to provide swamp coolers for buildings without air conditioning for temporary relief from the extreme heat in our buildings. This work would not have been possible without the collaboration of our team and the district leadership. All voices were heard. In addition to these committees, I, along with my fellow committee member, Kim, who is here, testified remotely to the Colorado State House and State Senate for a bill that will provide federal funding to help install and maintain HVAC systems for all schools in the state. Kim and I were told that our testimonies helped influence the passing of this bill. Without the opportunity to have public comment, we cannot say for sure if this bill would have passed in both the House and Senate. But because we were able to testify during the public comment time, this bill passed and the governor signed it this June. So, thank you, and I hope you keep public comment time during each board meeting. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank y'all so much who came to speak today. Um, next up, we are on to board topics and committee reports. This agenda item is an opportunity for board members to provide, oh, look at this, that would be much easier, wouldn't it? To provide an update on committee work or speak to board topics. Do any board members have anything that they would like to report? Go ahead, Jess.
Uh, so Kristen and I had the opportunity to go to the admin kickoff, and I also attended the new teacher kickoff. And I just gotta say, if you wanna feel energized for a new school year, that is the place to be. The red carpet, like, I don't know how I was gonna feel about it. Not gonna lie, socializing is not always my favorite thing to do. But some, but I knew, and it was super early in the morning, and I knew if I went, I was gonna feel good. And I did, and it did not disappoint. And then I stayed, and I wasn't going to, and then I stayed for like, I think, two hours of the new teacher stuff. And if I were gonna be a new teacher, that's where I'd wanna be. It was, it made me feel good about the year I have ahead of me. It made me feel good about what we're doing and the progress we're making and yeah, I just can't say enough. And the admin one was also amazing, like, there was some rat paper scissors action. I can't remember who won. But like, just the camaraderie in the rooms before the schools are even open is just phenomenal. So, we, I just wanna shout out to the district. Thank you guys for putting that on. It was amazing. I, I felt energized, so I can only imagine how all of our schools are feeling that tr- that, what is it, matriculate's out? It's good stuff. So, thank you so much. And please go next year. It's the place you wanna be.
Anyone else? Scott, did you, oh, okay. Did you have anything? Okay. Yeah, I'll just, uh, no, you're good, you're good. I'll just, uh, yeah, I got to go to the, the admin kickoff and that was, it was just so much fun. Um, just the hard work that gets put into, um, getting ready, uh, the, the buildings ready, the, um, the teachers, you know, getting ready for, for you all to come into the buildings. Um, it's just, it's a lot of work, um, behind the scenes. I know you know that. Um, and I know you are doing the same thing for your students. Um, so I just wanted to say thank you for all of that. Um, and I, I do believe I said I was gonna start off this meeting, uh, all meetings now with the Rocky Mountain cheer. Wasn't that what we were gonna do? Yeah, yeah, so, next time. We'll do it next time. So, yeah. Next time. So. All right, anyone else? All right, go ahead.
Um, a brief update for, from Legislative Committee. Um, I spoke with Ann Barkis pertaining to the special session that is coming up. Um, I think they start on the twenty-first. Um, as you know, um, some of the federal, um, legislation that has passed recently will have an impact on state budgets somewhat drastically. Um, Ann, in conjunction with Casby, is going to be monitoring and representing us at that. Um, also, over the weekend, uh, had the pleasure of going to the legislators' town hall at the library, which was very interesting, to say the least. There was great, um, community participation and actually a lot of questions pertaining to school funding. Um, it looks, um, going forward in this special session that we are not going to be having any drastic material impacts. Um, however, going forward, um, in the preceding years, it may be difficult. Met with, uh, Andrew Bezennecker, who is the House District Representative for District Fifty-three, I believe. Um, he will be down at the Capitol, um, if I've, on all of your behalf, I pledged our support. If he needs any help, um, during the special session, we said that we will volunteer, and if they need public comment, we will, um, go down there and take care of it. Uh, last but not least, um, definitely, uh, the Summer Musical was wonderful. And I'd just like to say specifically, Summer Schaefer, um, and Tracy Katz did a wonderful job for the PSD Foundation. They really deserve credit for their, uh, commitment to, to that project. It, it was wonderful. Thank you.
Go ahead, Scott.
I collected my thoughts. No, just kidding. I just wanted to welcome Andrew Spain, our newest, uh, board member. This is his first meeting, so he's the new kid. So, everybody be nice to Andrew. Say hi to Andrew. There we go, thank you. Okay. I just wanted to say we're very excited to have you join us and, um, thank you for being here.
Glad to be here, but if it's a Rocky Mountain High School cheer, I'm not sure I could participate as a, a graduate of FCHS. Just throwing that out there.
All right, well, we'll arm wrestle later. We'll figure it out. Opposite ends. Yes, please, go ahead.
You know, uh, thank you for just allowing me just a brief moment to speak. I wanted to take a quick second to tee up a conversation that we'll have, um, in a minute or two regarding emergency superintendent planning. Don't be scared. But we have an executive cabinet team in this district that are all-stars. You are all-stars. And I think about all of the work that you continue to pull off, not just in the summer, but each and every year, and we talk about it tonight through the lens of the UIP and the strategic plan, and also elevating all of these various capital projects. I can proudly say to all of you that any of these people can sit in this chair, and this district will be okay. I am so grateful, we are so grateful and lucky to have talented leadership who not only have a shared vision, but are consistently working together to make sure we have deep sense of belonging for every employee, for every student in this district, that we continue to figure out ways to have and drive more consistency in this system and be a more coherent system. And I am inspired by all of you, and Dr. Hooton, I see you over there, but that goes to you as well. So, I just wanted to take a moment because all of the things that are happening, whether it's our results, whether it's executing on new air conditioning projects, whether it's making sure that schools are open on the first day of school, many of these people were at Beatty Elementary School cleaning kitchens, scrubbing floors this weekend. And those things don't go in the newspaper, but I just think it's really important to publicly acknowledge how incredible all of you are, so I just wanna say thank you.
Thank you for that. I know that so much work gets done behind scenes that just, it would not, th- this district would not work the way it does without the heart, the care, um, and the hard work that people put in, not so that they can be seen doing it, but because they know it's the right thing to do. They know it's, it's what's best for their students. They know it's, what's best for their staff. Um, and I just wanna say thank you for that. It just makes me so proud to, to work with y'all. So, thank you. Okay. Anybody else have anything after that? All right, we will move on to seven-point-oh consent agenda. Would any board members like to pull anything from consent? Seeing none, can I get a motion?
Okay. I move the board approve and adopt the recommended actions for the items on the consent agenda.
Can I get a second? Thank you, Jess. Angel, can you call the vote, please?
Jim Brokish.
Aye.
Kristen Draper.
Aye.
Connor Duffy.
Aye.
Kevin Havelda.
Aye.
Scott Schoenbauer.
Aye.
Andrew Spain.
Aye.
Jessica Zamora.
Aye.
Motion passes seven-zero.
Thank you. Now, move on to action items. Eight-point-one, EL two-point-five, emergency superintendent and executive succession. Can I get a motion, please? Go ahead, Jim, if you'd like to.
I move that the board determine that the superintendent has reasonably interpreted the Board of Education Policy EL two-point-five in his internal monitoring report dated August twelfth, twenty-twenty-five, and that the evidence presented supports the superintendent's conclusions stated in the internal monitoring report.
Can I get a second? All right, thank you, Connor. Angel, can you, oh, sorry, is there any discussion on this? Okay. Jim, did you have something?
Nope.
Okay. Um, all right, Angel, can you please call the vote?
Jim Brokish.
Aye.
Kristen Draper.
Aye.
Connor Duffy.
Aye.
Kevin Havelda.
Aye.
Scott Schoenbauer.
Aye.
Andrew Spain.
Aye.
Jessica Zamora.
Aye.
Motion passes seven-zero.
All right, thank you. Moving on to nine-point-oh informational reports and discussion items. Nine-point-one, board consideration of reviews to board policy GP three-point-one-three, public participation at school board meetings. Uh, so this will give us an opportunity to go ahead and discuss, um, board policy G, uh, GP three-point-one-three. And wondering if there was anybody who would like to kick off this discussion?
Can we get the policy language up on the screen so we can look at it? Is that possible? Thank you.
Okay. All right, as we're bringing that up. Um, so just, um, for people who both have made comments or people who are at home watching, um, G-point-one-three, the general, um, sorry, public participation at school board meetings. One of the, um, general changes that we are looking possibly to make is to limit, um, the public comment on the second, uh, work session of the month. And also, we are be increasing our, um, our, I'm sorry, I'm having trouble with words today. Be increasing our community engagement. And by increasing our community engagement to once a month, two hours apiece, and being able to have that back-and-forth dialogue, that is what we're really interested in. We wanna be able to talk to people. Um, we, a- again, I understand the value of the three minutes of speaking to us, but it's also very difficult sometimes to have that conversation, to get that nuance, to get that understanding. And so, what we're really looking forward to doing is having more of those two-way dialogues, um, back-and-forth discussions, and being able to have that, um, more nuanced approach to this. And, you know, the, one of the things that I think is, is important to keep in mind is that this is a volunteer position. And so, the time that we are spending here, we, this would be an additional evening. This would be an additional two hours that we are doing. Um, and it's also an additional time for, you know, parents, uh, community members to be able to come in um, and be able to stay and have that full-on conversation with board members. So, that is the intent of that. Um, I don't know if there's anybody who would like to expand on that or make a comment regarding that? Go ahead, Jess.
So, first, I wanna say I appreciate the protection of our time because I don't think we do that very often. Uh, we are in public service, and so we strive to do just that and have meetings with folks as much as humanly possible. One of the reasons that I want us to seriously consider this is we have considered having a student advisor come and talk to us. I wanna use their time as effectively as possible. At our work sessions, we invite other folks to influence and give us information to consider before we take votes. And oftentimes, they come at the very end of our meeting. Sometimes they don't even start speaking until ten PM or eleven PM. And some of those folks, like last year when we had transportation come, they started, I wanna say, at ten or eleven PM, and they start their job at four, four-thirty in the morning. And they're dedicating their time, and I wanna respect that as much as I also wanna respect our time. Um, I, I understand the want for having community comment twice. And there's a part of me that, in my heart, wants to be able to give all the things. And I also know, to your point of having those community engagement sessions, we've heard folks come to our podium, podium crying out of fear because speaking in public and on-camera is terrifying. And wanting to give them an alternative space for that voice. I've also heard folks who have concerns because it won't, uh, the, the public record isn't the same. We're not posting those community engagement sessions. They are recorded, so they are on record. They're just not posted the same way. They're not videoed like these are. So, I, on the one hand, I understand that it's not as easily accessible as these meetings, at the same time, it is available. And so, I'm trying to grapple with, I want to respect the, the desire for community comment, and I also want to appreciate the people who come and give us information that we need. In addition to the folks who come to community comment, I wanna respect that if we are, our intention is to have a student help us make decisions, I wanna make sure that we're using their time as effectively as possible. Um, you know, we're essentially sacrificing if our community commenter is correct, and we have three hundred minutes or five hours of community comment time that we would potentially be saving, and we're giving back a minimum of, uh, twelve hours. So, it's still a trade-off, but- So it's still a trade-off, but I think the conversational piece is really important. My first two years on the board, there was a person who came to every single meeting wanting back and forth dialogue. And we're finally getting to a space where we have a plan for some consistent back and forth dialogue. I'm really proud of that. So that's my two cents at the moment.
I think the other part to consider with, sorry to jump in, but I think the other part to consider too with the, the community engagement sessions is not only are we talking about a dialogue between people so that we can have that better understanding, but we're also talking about doing it in the schools and doing it within the feeder systems. So it's a place that parents feel comfortable. They know their school, they know their building, and by doing it at two different schools on the same night, we are giving multiple opportunities for parents and community members to be able to come in and speak to us where they are at, so they don't have to come here. So it's our effort to go to you, which is what people have been asking for. So there's, you know, we do understand that there is some hesitancy on this, and we just want to explain the reasoning there, so. Other thoughts?
First of all, I had a question. So would it be similar to what we were doing last year with the community sessions where we would split the board, three and three or three and four?
Yeah.
Going to those?
Yeah.
Okay. I have a lot of thoughts on this. I've shared them with everybody here on the board. To me, public comment is about transparency, accessibility, to get, for us to also to hear what the community has to say, what they're concerned about. Somebody earlier said that this is the one chance for the entire board, the superintendent and the cabinet, to hear those points. And I think the fact that, you know, we're doing community outreach in those community sessions, that's great, and I thought those were fantastic last year, and that, I get very frustrated here because I want to have the back and forth, so I love having those sessions. I am in favor of both and, keeping both community comments, because a month, a full month is a long time to be able to assert an issue, especially if that issue's about to come up for vote. If we're going to hear a community comment and then vote that same night, that's just going to be a useless community comment because we've already decided by then. So I really like the idea of having, having both. I get the idea that we're pressed for time, and we're all volunteers, but this is what we signed up for. This is the gig. This is the gig. You're running for it, man. And it's, it's part of the deal. I was told early on, some of these meetings go six hours, and that was not wrong. And I prepared my family for that, and it sucks sometimes, but guess what? So do some of the issues that everybody else is dealing with. We owe it. This is public service. I want to hear all the time, and emails get lost. We've seen it. With the school closures, we got hundreds of emails, and we try to read them all, but you can't get to them all with email. There's nothing more powerful than a person talking, a kid talking about the heat in their school or an important issue to them. I have a couple quotes here. Thomas Jefferson said, "Government closest to the people serves the people best." This is exactly that. I think, I looked at some of the old, the videos that are on. I think there's, it's great to have access to that. I think people who have kids at home, young kids at home, they can't come to these meetings. They can't come to a community session even. They have to watch these YouTube videos to see what's going on at the school board meeting. And I think it's really important to look at that and see how we're using our time. Resolutions and recognitions can take over an hour. Sometimes our community commenters sit for an hour and a half out there just waiting, and they're told they have to get here right at the beginning of the meeting or their, you know, the actual rules say if you're not here at a certain time, you're not going to get up on the podium. So I think that's a disservice. I think we should change it so that they're able to get up here quicker. If they're taking their time out of their night to come here, we should honor that. And I love the recognitions and the resolutions. I think it's great, but an hour and a half sometimes, like, it's too much. That's where we can cut back. Casby told us that's where we should cut back. They were surprised that we did that. So, but I did. I looked at some of these, some of the comments only lasted, I think the one in May lasted 12 minutes. It was the total of community comment. That's not a burden. That's fine. 20 to 30 minutes, that's, that's about the average because we get about six or seven commenters each time. Sometimes tonight, we had 14 sign up, but only 10 spoke. That's 30 minutes. Not a big deal. So I think that's the most important thing. I have no doubt about the intentions of this policy. I don't think they're bad intentions, but I think the perception is that it violates the spirit of rebuilding trust that we talked about when in '23, '24, we were talking about closing schools, and we said, "We have to rebuild that trust." I think it's, one thing that has been stated in some of the information that was provided before this meeting was that, hey, the school board has the right to determine how their meetings are run. We can choose to, public comment's not required, so we don't have to have it, but we ought to. It's the right thing to do to show the community that we respect them as partners, and we want and need to hear their opinions, both positive and negative. And so the resolutions make us all feel good, and the comments also can make us feel good, but also can make us feel bad. But guess what? I've got a list. Community comment has been essential for changing policies from teachers and students advocating for heat days. That really worked. That's a big deal. It's happening right now. School closures, that discussion was monumental to the future of this district in more ways than one. Getting awareness about dyslexia, integrated services issues, solar panels, we've been talking about that for quite a while. A beautiful thing happened. A student came here and talked about the, how easy it would be to bring scoliosis screenings back to schools. It's not expensive, but it's really a powerful thing that needs to be done, and we're doing it. It worked. We got, we got that implemented right away. People might remember James Campbell. He's an assistant coach at Lincoln Middle School football. He came in and talked about the accessibility issues for his, his own handicap and grandparents trying to come and see a game at Lincoln Middle School. We're working on solving that problem. Public comment made that happen. It made that work. Last thing I'll say, and this is about tough things that need to happen. You have to speak truth to power, and that's what the public comment does. Frederick Douglass said, "Power concedes nothing without a demand." It never did, and it never will. So please keep those words in mind when you're thinking about changing these policies.
Thank you. Jim?
Yeah, I'll go. I had a, I had a big sheet prepared, and I'm gonna throw all that away. I want everyone to know, be clear, we're not voting on this tonight. We're voting on this next round. Okay, so that's just, everyone's clear on that. I think what might be best for me, rather than go over some of these things, is just to talk about a personal experience I had with community comment. Okay? I think that would be worthwhile. It was about a year ago. We're pushing Foray, okay? We want to get Foray passed. And Scott and I decided to have a coffee session, okay? And we'd go to a coffee shop and invite anyone that wants to come, okay? It was kind of disappointing because really, the only person that showed initially was Nate, a former board member. So not what we were looking for, but eventually Anna's husband came, and then Anna came, okay? And so instead of talking about Foray, we talked about dyslexia, which was awesome, okay? This was the first time for me that I'd really spent time with Anna, although I'd listened to her three-minute snippets for a long time, right? But like Anna said, it's hard to pack that into that little bit of time, okay? So we had a great discussion, okay? And I left kind of feeling energized and like, wow, I really understand now where Anna's coming from. So that's great. And then as we were, we had stood up, I think, and I had to say, because the purpose of this meeting was to talk about 5A, right? Foray, whatever it was, was to talk about that, you know, getting the bond done. And I said, "You realize that if this doesn't get passed," because what Anna wants is a lot more resources put toward dyslexia and that kind of thing, "you realize if this doesn't get passed, we're not in add mode, we're in cut mode." I mean, that was just a fact, okay? That's where the district was. Okay. So, and Anna seemed to understand that, and then we all went home, and okay. So I come into the next board meeting, and Danny went ahead and she said, "Mr. Brokish, Director Brokish, how dare you bully Anna with Foray? And Taylor, you did something similar. You said, 'How dare you bully Anna with Foray?'" Now, I've been called many things, but anyone that knows me knows that I am not a bully. In fact, in high school, I think I'd have been voted the guy least likely to bully anyone, okay? That's just not who I am, okay? To make the situation worse, while Danny and, while the two of them were presenting, Sabrina had her cell phone out, and she had it focused on me. And why, why would you do that, Sabrina? I think it was to see what my reaction would be to this community comment, okay? And the whole thing, it just made me sick. I went home that night, I didn't sleep. It was a terrible night. So I don't know which way I'm going to vote on this yet, actually. Your comments and Scott's comments put me a little on the fence here. So I may vote against this proposal, but what I expect from you is respect. And respect does not look like this. And in addition, I took the high road and went back to Anna and said, "Anna, wow, if you felt bullied at all because of anything I said, I am sorry." So this community comment thing goes both ways. Think about your behavior and think about your tone. I'm done.
Go ahead, Kevin.
I had some thoughts on this subject. My own thinking has evolved since we, and I remember our discussions being somewhat informal about it. Being the former classroom teacher in me, I tend to be sometimes, I know I'm type A. I know this about myself, I'm self-aware. I tend to be a little more militant about efficiencies and how we use our time. So it was in sort of that vein that I was thinking this, this issue. And then since then, like any issue, talk to other people, talk to people who are going to be affected by it, talk to neighbors, talk to people who have read it, and just get a general sense of how people are reacting to it as I'm forming my own thoughts. So the first thing I want to do, and that's why I wanted to have the policy up, is it, Dr. Hooton, is it possible to zoom in on the first paragraph so people can read it a little bit easier? My old eyes, I can't see it from back here. I've got it on my screen, but, yeah, I just want to look at the first paragraph for now. Yeah, that's perfect. So I thought it'd be helpful to read some of it, since we're talking about it. "So the board policy begins, all regular and special meetings of the Board of Education shall be open to the public, except in certain circumstances, the board is not required to provide an opportunity for community comment. However, because the board desires to hear the viewpoints of all community members through the district while balancing the need to conduct its business in an orderly and respectful manner that assures the regular agenda of the board is completed in a timely fashion, the board will generally schedule time during the, and the change being the first regular board meeting of the months for brief comments from community members." And then down below, it says that it's, I believe it's typically allotted 45 minutes. So I think it's helpful to ground both in the language of the policy. I agree with a lot of what's been said on both sides. One, this is, again, as we're, as we're being trained in how to do effective policy governance, it's a public meeting, but it's the board's meeting that's done in public. And so I think it's, that's kind of a helpful grounding, too. And the lawyer nerd in me wants to remind folks that First Amendment principles have modify, there's different caveats to different fora, right? So we're not right now on a public street or a public parking lot or a sidewalk, and so there are restrictions. We have a designated limited public forum, is what this is. Means that the restrictions on communication need to be content neutral, and we can't designate or endorse one view over another, right? So those are basically the strictures of what we're playing with. But apart from that, the bigger picture here, and I'm going to kind of echo a little bit of what Director Schoenbauer said, is that my, my leaning towards this is that it's important. It's, it's important to get input from the community lest we be, you know, confused about our role here. We serve our community. We serve our kids, first and foremost. I think there's not a single person in this room that would show up tonight for any reason if that wasn't the North Star of why you're actually physically in this room. So I want to give some, some grace and respect to that, and however you're coming into the room, you're coming here because of that word on the wall up there. So I think that, you know, keeping through the lens of this is a business meeting, and we're conducting the business of the, of the district carried out through the Board of Directors. It's an essential part of that business. Recently, we've explored other avenues to elicit public input, and Director, President Draper, you talked about these BOE engagement sessions, and I was a big champion of those, and I still am. I think that it's a different dynamic in that the community comment is a one-way street. It's input this way, and you have no idea how we're thinking. You know, our policy says we ought not really engage directly in the moment. I think that's prudent. But the, the engagement sessions, what I, what I really appreciated was the dynamic nature of having a conversation with folks. A completely unscripted, informal agenda, you come to us with what you need. So it's, it's very similar to a community comment in the sense that you come with your own agenda, and then you talk to us about it, and in so doing, and through those limited engagement sessions we've already had, my thinking has evolved on several subjects. But it's also allowed me to push back on certain community members in a different way when I, you know, someone was coming at an issue this way, and then I said, "Let's, let's look through an equity lens and see what that, let's unpack what that means for kids on this side of town." That's when we got some real honest conversation, which I think is very valuable. So I, I think that said, this is, I think I also want to honor something I heard Director Draper talk about, which is this is very much a working board. We carry multiple hats, and I'm not asking for pity or sympathy. We chose this. We jumped through 15 hoops to do this, because I, I will say this, I usually make I statements. I'll speak collectively because I think I'm in safe water here, that this is the most important work I think I'll ever do in my life. And I think that the people that are up here with me would agree with that. So, but it's, it's a, it's a third full-time job for me. It goes parent, attorney, board member, not always in that order, and I gotta, I gotta shuffle a lot of those things. So I hear what you're saying, Jim, about the respect going both ways, because we're people, too, at the end of the day. And I think sometimes that it's easy to forget that. I think cabinet are people, too. And so it's easy sometimes to be too informal or to be too sly with our comments both ways. And so I want to remind everyone that, that we are also modeling and demonstrating for our students how to have an exchange of ideas and how to advocate, and then people standing behind that podium have moved me before. I agree. They've also challenged how I think. The way I, the way I phrase community comment often is it's the agenda item that's the tough look in the mirror. And there's a lot of things in there that, that are hard to hear. There's a lot of things that I learned for the first time, and I don't for one second think I need less of that. I think I need more of that. The challenge being, though, is that we've got a lot of business to do, and it's not just that portion. The, I think the, the point that was made, which is a good one, is that I, I remember in June, I had a trial starting the next day, and we had three board meetings. And so someone's got to give there, and that's either a disservice to my clients or a disservice to my health or a disservice to the amount of energy that I'm going to show up in this room with. So my thoughts, and this is my own sort of tweaking of this language, I'm in the camp now, I've, I've come a full 360 in where I, I think it should be a fixture at every board meeting, especially when we're going to be discussing action items or things that involve people's lives that are going to have, that are going to feel a consequence of the decisions that we make up here and that have been made prior to that. I do propose restricting it to a set time of 30 minutes with the understanding that if we have more than 10 speakers sign up, if it's 12 to 15, we can always have discretion to allow more. I think that's, that's appropriate, too. If we get 60 people signing up for a community comment, then we need to rethink that. We need probably allocate more time. But I think that's fair. I think the other fair thing that I've been pushing for, that I'd like to see in our agendas, is timestamps of when things are going to happen for multiple reasons. One, to be transparent, if community comment, and some people have other obligations and they want to show up just for this, or they want to show up just for an information session, and they, they care about the other things, but they need to be in the room to hear the discussion of those things, I think we owe it to our community to say, "That's going to happen from 6:10 to 6:20," and that we hold ourselves accountable to that as best we can. And I know I'm talking a long time, so I'm violating that rule, and I'm usually the biggest culprit. I may a culpa. But what I can say is that when we have But what I can say is that when we have timestamps for things, that is, one, transparent. It holds us accountable. It also is respectful of our own time as well, but also allows the public to understand when things are going to be happening. So I think that's a more efficient way of doing it. I like the ideas too, again, if we're looking for efficiency gains, we're looking for time savers, which I think is, I think is how this conversation started. One idea, and I'm not going to take credit for it, but I really endorse, is I really believe that the resolutions and recognitions have a very important place in this room as well. I don't want to say if that, then the other. What I'd like to do is both and, but I think there is some efficient ways we can go about that as well. So one idea is for the recognitions component. And I think about the families and the people who come into this room with their Sunday best on, and they're being honored by their school board, by their local government, and there's cameras rolling and it's, they get to share it with their family. That's a huge, important moment. And we need to not forget about that part of our small experiment of this American democracy at the expense of what's happening nationally, because that's really important. And it's really important to me. And it's moved me to tears a couple of times too. So what I'd suggest is for recognitions to happen once a month. And I would flip the script as far as the policy for community comment and have resolution, or excuse me, recognitions and honors from a 5 to a 5:30 time slot, where we can do a lot of recognitions at once to a limited audience. And so those that are wanting to come for community comment or other business, they know that ahead of time. They can participate or not, but we reserve, we hold that space for the families and the community members and our staff and the people who are being honored. And then there's a brief intermission for 10, 15 minutes. And then we can conduct the, the normal business at, at 5:45 or 6 o'clock. I like that. That's also efficient. It dispenses with those in an efficient manner, but also still holds space for them. I think the same can be accomplished through resolutions, although I, I have been a proponent of thinking that resolutions need to be more, and I'm not saying they're just performative, but I think there needs to be more than a performative aspect of it being read once and then we don't hear about it, at least from up here. We don't, what I'd like to see, and this is going to take a lot more cooperation with our district leaders and, and principals and teachers, is that we have, we have a reading resolutions, similar at a 5 o'clock. We, we may not have presenters for those, but then I would like to see that we incorporate those, either principals hold space on a PA for, for an opening morning announcements. This is the resolution that the board passed. As you're going about your day, hold space for this. What does that mean as you interact with your fellow students on a day-to-day? What does this mean as you interact with someone that you don't know as much about? What can you learn from that person as you go through the hallways? Similarly, teachers, at the beginning of a, of a homeroom period, or I'm thinking of a beginning of a first period class, we pass this resolution. Let's do a think pair share. What do you think this means? Turn and talk to a neighbor. How can you incorporate that into our classroom today? How we can make that our values in our day-to-day? How can we live up to that as a school? And then share out what we've learned. And then check in with that a couple, a couple of classes. That, that's, that's the meat of what we're trying to do, right? That's that cascading effect that we're talking about with the, with the Unified Improvement Plan that we're going to talk about. So, those are a lot of my thoughts. I think that, so I like those changes. I, I think a reasonable compromise here, at least to alleviate some of the time constraints you're talking about, it would be setting it for 30 minutes. And if there, if there are additional requests, we don't just knock them off. We can, we can have some discretion, because I think it's in the board president's purview as far as the discretion of some of those things, is my read of the policy. But that, that way, we, we understand that it's business. It's 30 minutes, you know, and I think too, if we're going to hold space for 30 minutes, let's say we have three speakers, then we can also have the discretion to say, all right, well, you're going to get four minutes today, because we only have four speakers. And we have, that will still save time, but you're going to have a little bit more time to the extent you would appreciate it. I think that's a respect that we can offer to our community that have come up here and has been brave and stood behind that podium and said things that are maybe unpopular, that we, you know, they thought that they didn't, that we didn't want to hear, et cetera. So, I also like the timestamps on our agenda. I think that's important. And my, my vote would be to tweak other portions of our agenda to be a little bit more efficient. And with that, I will avail myself of the pulpit.
Thank you, Kevin. And just to speak to the timestamps, we are working on that as well. So that's going to be a both and for this as well. So we are trying to make sure that we, this is not the only way in which we are trying to make sure that we are efficient. This is just one of many ways in which we are trying to do that. Because as, as I like to say, no good decisions get made after 10 PM. And that's, you know, what's been happening. So, the, this is just a small part, but it is a part that is in our policy that we need to change publicly. The, you know, the aspect of putting in a timestamp is not something that we have to change a policy for. The aspect of doing resolutions is not something we have to change a policy for. This is, yeah. So it, it's a, just to keep that in mind, that it is a common, in combination with many other things that we are trying to do to be more efficient for not only those who are sitting here and sitting there, but for you all. Because this is just something that, you know, not too many people will sit and watch a three-hour YouTube board meeting. It's really not that exciting. I can't understand. So what we are trying to do is make sure that we get to the meat very quickly, have those really good discussions like we're having right now, and then make sure that we come to, you know, either if it's a vote or a resolution of some sort, then we, we do that, but we have that good discussion. And we're not doing that when people are tired and not maybe in, thinking in their best, at their best. So, that is the, that is the crux of this. Go ahead. I think, oh, Jess, I think...
I mean, I was just going to piggyback one thing of, of what you just said was, I mean, we're starting at 5 and then meeting actually at 5:30. Like we've sacrificed the dinner session in part to get this to be more efficient and timely. And my next question, actually, you're going to lead right into it, because I wanted to know what you thought and Connor, what you thought.
I, I guess I'm going to get, have fun playing the rookie card a little bit here and, and being in a very different situation than the rest of you all. So, one of the first things that Carolyn suggested that I do was to read all of the board policies. And in doing so, in first line in 3.2, item number one. So presumptively, that's the most important one, don't know. But given that it's number one, create the link between the ownership, those in the room, and the operational organization, which obviously then routes through, through the superintendent. I think about organizational behavior and performance. And the way to create links when we're in this role fundamentally comes down to listening, when I think about it. And, and, and I love how that jives with who I am as a person, because as I've shared with many of you, there's no single person that's in, in the room who's as smart as everyone put together. And so the only way to find out what others are thinking is through, of course, listening to them. Am I personally a fan of the community comment? I think I'm in the same boat as some of you. I, I hate the one-way nature of it, because I don't feel like we get that. But we're adding in the two-way nature. I can go and enjoy a good cup of coffee as well. And I'm going to be doing that probably the entire time I'm, I'm on the board. And so I think, especially when we've heard, as others have said, about building trust, this feels like the season when we need to be listening in as many ways as possible. Will we change it in the future? Well, let's have a discussion with the ownership, once we've added different things, and see how those things are working. That's what it feels like to me right now. Because I'm hearing different things from the community about if we don't have that, are there other ways to put in input electronically? We heard tonight about, is there Zoom meetings and some of those things like that? The fact that the PEA actually put out a statement on this, I thought was actually really important as well, because I don't recall having seen that routinely. Okay, again, rookie card. You guys have way more experience about whether they have weighed in on different pieces as well over the years. But it nonetheless strikes me as very important that one of the biggest organizations within the district that works for the district, obviously is saying, we don't like this. And so I'm very cautious about wanting to make a change to that. And if we do make a change, that's being about more open and more aware of what our ownership is saying, so we can become a better district and what we all want it to be.
Thank you. And who haven't, Connor, we haven't heard from you.
So before I become Debbie Downer again, and I'll volunteer more of your time, because I already did that earlier, but the expanded community engagement sessions were probably the highlight for me last year. All right, because there was the two-way dialogue with everybody. It's, that's quality engagement, right? And, I mean, we could have community comment for three hours. We need, you know, to have that actual conversation with the community, in the community, at the schools, because not everybody can get here. I, I think that's really important to say. And those were well-attended, the ones that I were at. And I think that, you know, there was always over six people there. And I, I think that's, maybe that's a low bar, but I think that's pretty good turnout. So, I'd like to see us do, irrespective of how we come down on this, more of those. On the Debbie Downer side, I think I've probably been privately the most vocal about reforming kind of what are, I consider our work sessions, when we have the big circle. We're falling way short on that. A work session is actually where your director should be sitting around and having engaging conversations about where they are, not where we're running through business, where we're doing consent agenda, where we're doing rewards and recognitions. Extended community comment is not the only reason why we're running late. It's definitely not. One of the reasons why I think we need a broader reform package of what we're doing at those work sessions is we should model our session off of other places that are doing it well. City of Fort Collins, their work sessions are very efficient. Laramie County Planning Commission that I'm on, really efficient. Two discussion items. And sometimes they do go really, really long, but it's the directors hashing it out where the whole public can hear and see what you're doing. There's never, there's never binding votes in those, right? And then that's kind of acts as the first reading. Then it comes up in front of the board where there would be community comment later on, so that people can listen to those online or in person, and then provide community comment about what was coming onto the agenda. I think we can package this in a way to where we become more efficient in our work sessions, but it really does hinge upon us spending more time with our constituents in the community. I'm, you know, I'm, I'm for changing it if we can get that broad package. If we're just going to ax community comment, then, then no, right? Like that's, and I, I think that's kind of how the optics of this is looking right now. And I, I'm not, I'm not comfortable with that. So, it has to be in a much broader package of reform to that specific working session that we have. I think, last but not least, for, for everybody who's provided community comment, we appreciate it. I think sometimes we come across as disingenuous, because we sit here and we can't engage. And I don't like that barrier. I much prefer the community engagement sessions where we, where we've seen a lot of the people who have serious issues engage with us and we have good discussions there. I'd like to see more of that, because then we can make better informed decisions in general on that. So, if we can get that all together in, and I don't know, what are you guys thinking timeframe on this? Two, two or three meetings out? I'm, I'm not exactly sure.
Something that, you know, we can come back and, and discuss in leadership for this week as far as some of the, some of the suggested changes. And again, it's, these, you know, these are just some of the changes that we are looking to make. It just happens to be that this is the one that's written in policy. Yeah.
Exactly. This one we, we do have to vote on. The other ones we control the schedule on.
Right.
I'd also say that, again, it's not set in stone. If it doesn't work and we start seeing two people show up at community engagements and we're not getting that dialogue, we can always change back.
And I think it's important to note too, that, you know, the engagement sessions that we were doing to different schools were happening on the same evening. And, you know, I think the, I, I'm trying to think of what the average was for the ones that I went to, was about, I think about 35. So, I mean, it was really nice to be able to have that, that conversation. In one of the schools, we sat around in a big circle and we're able to, you know, talk about what our biggest concerns were. And then we kind of went from there. Okay, when the majority of the group said biggest concern was X, Y, or Z, we'll discuss that. And then the next one came up, and then the next one, and the next one. So, I felt like those were efficient, but engaging. And, you know, it's, it's a, it's a both and for that. What we want is to make sure that we are hearing and having that discussion with you and making sure that we're understanding, again, all of those nuances that are coming up with that, all of those details that we can't pack into a three-minute session and that we might not get somewhere else. So I just want to, it, it is a both and as far as making changes to the way we are conducting our meetings, the way that we are continuing and expanding upon our engagement sessions, and, you know, is this something that we want to continue as well? So, yeah. Kevin, did you have a?
I, I learned something through the course of this and talking to folks and partners in our community. Again, and part of this, you're not, you're never in learning on the board, just because, you know, you've been on it for a year or so. So, again, I, I don't think this is naive of me, but I really thought that the, the BOE engagement sessions would be better attended or better received than, you know, the exchange at community comment. And I think as someone was pointing out tonight, they're different. They serve kind of different purposes. And one, one thing that, that struck me was that, and this is also for everyone's information, is that the, the BOE engagement sessions are recorded meetings. So we have it recorded there, they're public meetings, so there is a public record, which I appreciate. But it's different, because there isn't a video component to them. This room is well-equipped and we have someone behind, we have people behind the doors that are making sure the, the acoustics are good, that the, the video is, is locked onto people. That makes it more accessible for those that can't physically be here, that want to participate. So one idea is maybe we can try out, I personally love having the engagement sessions at schools, especially schools that I wouldn't otherwise go to. It's, it's a really nice kind of feel. It's, it's, you know, it's formal, it's informal, but it feels nice. I wonder if it would be prudent to try to have one of these here and if we have a bigger attendance, that could be streamed. And it would be more of a back-and-forth, it would be a true BOE engagement session. So it would be a public meeting that we could do here, that could be recorded, so that people that couldn't participate, that might want to at least see how that, that goes, they can engage with it on YouTube. And they can say, hey, look at this clip right here. We were talking about this. I don't know, it's just an idea. And I don't want to put more people at work, but I mean, we've, the other thing with BOE engagements, it'd be nice to think that it's just us committing time. John Cope has been there multiple occasions. We've had AV and equipment folks show up on their extra time to make sure that those things run. I've had Dr. Hoot and I've seen assistant superintendents. I've seen staff there dedicating more of their own time as well. So it's not just a, it's not just us that we need to consider. It's the staff and the resources that we're spending. But that was my big question, is maybe we could do one here?
It's definitely a thought. Other, other thoughts? Yeah, go ahead, Jess.
Well, I'm more want to get like a temperature check on, so Director Cavell, that you put in the room doing 30-minute max, was that both meetings or just at the work sessions that you were thinking?
For community comment? I was thinking we could do 30 minutes as an agenda item for each.
And the next question is then, how does that land with everyone else?
I think that's, that's fair. I like the idea of having the option to expand it. If there's like a, you know, heavy interest in a certain subject where lots of people have asked to be a part of it, then we can adjust it. But the goal of 30 minutes or less would be a good one, I think.
Sorry, one point of clarification. And I'm not being draconian or being arbitrary with that 30 minutes. So I, I have also been kind of keeping an informal timestamp of agenda items for the last couple of meetings to figure out how long things take. And so I actually, before I, I re-immersed myself with the policy, I thought it was 30 minutes for community comment. I learned that it was typically, I think the language is typically 45. So, 30 felt right, based on the percentage of time we were spending on information sessions, on action items, on information, on recognitions and honors and resolutions. That felt about in parity with other agenda items. So it wasn't just an arbitrary, I'm saying 30 minutes and I'm done. There was some thought behind that, so.
I think you have to be a little careful too, with the 30 minutes or optionally more, because you can get into conspiracy theories about, oh, they drew the cut line here because they didn't want to hear from that person. And I, I don't know, I don't like that part of this. So I'd prefer either 30 minutes or 45 or some fixed amount and just deal with that.
Andrew, you had something?
I, I think, I, I get nervous about time limits, because things ebb and flow. When just a year and a half ago, you're having to limit to two minutes per person, because so many people wanted to talk, that was a huge issue. Maybe it's a one-off. I'm sure you probably who lived through it would prefer it to be a, a one-off and not be in that situation again. But I, I would like to see, I, I guess on, on my first reaction, it seems sensible to sort of say, look, we're going to have a structured meeting. They talk about meetings that have time limits or well-run meetings. I totally get that. But somewhere back to the temperature taking for, if something comes up and it becomes that big an issue, where do we have flexibility to adjust that time within the agenda for the individual meeting? I, I just... I, I, it just feels like that, that's back to good meeting principles that we probably want to have those mechanisms internally. And if we're just not able to do it, figure out how to have a separate meeting if it's that big an issue or whatever is necessary. I just think that's appropriate. And a little bit back to probably what Connor, you're talking about with the package, to have some of that flexibility to meet the needs of our ownership to serve the community.
Scott, go ahead.
Yeah, one, one thing I didn't want to kind of blow past was the point about the student representative because I think that, that is an important point. We had to respect their time. They, it's school night, so we don't want them having to be here for a long time. So I would, I would also suggest that with community comment on those nights, we could move that back. Community comment could be later in the evening, but we also need to make sure we inform the community commenters that it's okay not to show up till eight o'clock, you know, to sit through the first two hours. In that way, the student can be here for the information sessions, that type of thing. So I would, because I really value that voice, and that's a whole new thing that we're adding, but I think it would be, we need to respect that, so. Oh, sorry, going back to 30 or 45, sorry. I, I'm good on the 30. I think that's, that's fair. And I think we've kind of fallen in that most, most times, most meetings.
Connor, go ahead.
Yeah. All or nothing, right? If we don't have it, if we're not running an efficient work session, as I was stating earlier, then whether it's 30 or 40 doesn't make a big difference to me. I don't think we've really bumped up to that 45 limit many times. I know that some of those meetings during consolidation we did, but I, I also think that was kind of warranted. So if we're not going to look at the big picture here and do a larger patch, the package of reform, then I would suggest not changing the policy and staying at 45.
Go ahead.
Sorry. All of this conversation has made me also want to remind ourselves as well as our community that while the policy is deciding, is it one meeting, is it two meetings, is it 30 minutes or 45 minutes? As a board, and granted, I, I also want to keep myself aware that the board may change over the years, and so I don't, I don't want to change the policy in such a way that allows a future board to not honor its community, the way that I think we collectively have. But when we've had the consolidation conversation, we added community comment sessions, right? We added a massive session where we had, I think it was 140 people come talk to us. We also added at the end of that year opportunities to have small group discussions. And we all sat in classrooms at Rocky Mountain High and had groups of people talk to us throughout the day. So I think part of where, with this particular policy, the reason I'm okay with changing is because I know that the people here would honor our community. We would do what we needed to do to make sure we were hearing what we needed to hear. However, if we're also having concerns about future shifts, that's, I guess, where I can understand a qualm of, have we always honored folks? Not perfectly, but I think we have strived to earn back trust. I think we have done our due diligence. Are we perfect? No, we're human. But it's not like, I, I don't want us to get stuck in a corner where we tell ourselves this narrative that we haven't done our due diligence, we haven't put the effort out there. Because we consistently have, we haven't done it perfectly, but we, we've tried to show up really well.
And I think I'll add on to that as just a, a last part of, again, this is an addition. I know that, you know, people are seeing it as a subtraction, but honestly, what it is, is an addition of seven hours over the course of the year. Because we will be doing two-hour sessions that we can have dialogue. And I'll tell you, none of the two-hour sessions that I went to lasted two hours. They were all three to four hours because people just, once we get talking, that's what happened, is we were able to engage and say, oh, and, and then how this connects to this. So they were not, I mean, they started at 5:30 and if I got home by nine, it was, that was an early night. Usually I was home by 9:30, 10 o'clock. So those were really important for us, and I want to make sure that we leave space for that so that we have the ability and the wherewithal to make sure that when an important topic does come up, it's not that we want to hear, you know, 15 extra people speaking to us about the same thing. I want to hear the reasons why. I want to hear the, the purpose of it. I want to hear their solutions. I want to hear what it is that they don't find inclusive or working for them or whatever it is. And I can't do that in a three-minute session. I can't do that when somebody's talking for three minutes and then I get to say, okay, thank you, welcome, next person, and then write down in my notes, you know, two or three words as they're, as they're speaking. That's not, to me, it's not necessarily a productive way to, to work. And it's not that the voice isn't important, it's very important, and we still need to have that time to then dig into that. Because it's, it's, you know, bringing it to, bringing whatever it is that, that people want to bring to us, and then to say, okay, at our next conversational meeting, please come, please talk to us about this because I want to know more. I want to, so much more than you can possibly say in three minutes. And it sounds like you might even have some solutions on this. And so let's talk about what we can do together to make those solutions work. So it's not, again, I, I don't want to think of it as an elimination. I know that that's what it's been discussed as. It's a game of seven hours over the course of the year, you know? And actually, more than that, when we're talking about the, right now, we limit it to 45 minutes if you, you know, talk about it that way. And significantly more when you talk about it's a two-hour meeting but never runs less than three. So I, I just want us to be aware of that, be aware of our abilities here, and let people know that this is a package deal. This is not something that we are like, we are not going to do this and that is all we are doing. We are doing many other things to make sure that we are running efficiently and smoothly and making sure that we have what we need to make sure that we have a, an efficiently-run board meeting. So with that, if there's any, go ahead, Kevin, if there's, and, and then we're going to go ahead and wrap it up to the next one because we're trying to be efficient.
I agree. I, and what I was going to say too is, is this is both directed at folks that want to participate in community comment, but also think people that are presenting on information sessions. I, it's, I, I forget who said it, but you said it was hard to, you know, not engage with people. I work for judges all the time, and so they're stoic and they don't respond to me. They have hundreds of cases, they don't care about mine. My job is to get the information to rise to the top of what I want them to do, get in, get out. And so strangely, I've started to feel a little bit like that up here when we have such an incredible amount of information. So my, my rule of thumb would be if you're doing an information session, keep in mind, it's something that people have worked on in a specific subgroup for a year. It's, it's the penultimate apotheosis of a year's worth of work they're presenting to the decision-maker for a first read or something. That's one of seven that we may have that night. 10 PowerPoint slides is my rule of thumb, please. Think about the audience that you're presenting for and, you know, it is, is a little bit of an art and a science of seeing behind that podium, so I, I still want to give grace to that. But I think to your point though, there, there are ways that we need to, and I like how Director Duffy said, it was the, the total repackage, is that I get it's an important thing for that, but then those people that present, they're in and they're out, and then we're moving on to the next thing. There is so much information overload, so be respectful of the time that you're asking for. And so I think there's information sessions, we could say, let's keep those to 45 minutes, 30 minutes for the presentation, 15 minutes for Q and A. On certain topics like the one that's going to come next, that deserves more time. And I think the, the end, I'll, I'll leave this because I did read the policy again, discretion remains with the board's presiding officer to interpret the rules and determine the scope of this policy. So structure is important, flexibility is the name of the game. And with that, I will yield.
Okay. Can we go ahead and, so, we're not going to?
Madam President, point of order, point of order, please.
Thank you.
Could we have the attorney please review the decorum in the boardroom, please? I think we don't need that anymore. Thank you.
Thank you. So with that, I think there's a lot to think about here, a lot to chew on, and we have some discussion to do at our next leadership meeting that we will, we will go ahead and discuss that, and we will take a vote next, at our next meeting. Sound okay? Yeah, you want to take five? Let's take five. So we will be back here at, it is 7:15, so 7:20. Thank you. Thank you. All right, I'm going to start calling people back. We're going to go through the Unified Improvement Plan next. Are we ready for video? Just normally I get a thumbs up from... We good? Awesome, thank you. Okay. Welcome back. And it is now 7:27 PM and we will be back in action to action items 10.1, Pooter District Unified Improvement Plan 2025-2026 School Year. Can I get a motion, please?
Point of order, Madam President. I was a little confused about this too. It looks like we have an action item that follows the information, correct?
Oh, yes. Thank you, we are on 9.2. I appreciate that, thank you.
I do still have a point of clarification on that though. So what is the reason for that? Typically if we're going to vote on something, we'll get the information at the motion. Can someone explain that? Because I was confused.
Yeah.
It's a wonderful question. As I shared with you in the community in my opening, the presentation that you're about to hear that's informational in nature is helping understand how our district Unified Improvement Plan aligns to our district strategic plan. So our vision and our mission cascades from this boardroom to our classroom. So it's a little bit above and beyond added context, beyond the UIP. And so we thought that context was important, both for you to be able to hear, but also ask questions prior to feeling comfortable voting specifically on the UIP. Yeah, you bet. No, it's okay.
And I appreciate that, yeah, because that is the normal order of operations as we will take a vote, get the information, I mean, get a motion, get the information. Well, I appreciate you pointing it out because I just skipped right to 10.0. So we are actually at 9.2. School District Unified Improvement Plan and Strategic Plan 2025-2026 School Year. And Brian is going to do the introductions.
Yeah, thank you. So thanks for the break. We were able to narrow down our slides from 15 to 10. We got a secret shot clock on Dr. Schmitz here. He's taking the lead on this presentation, but is joined by a great supporting cast that includes lots of leaders across the system. So I'm going to turn it over to you, Dr. Schmitz, to talk a little bit around our district strategic plan, where we are, where we're headed, and how that aligns to our district UIP. Thanks so much for being here.
Thank you Superintendent Kingsley. Welcome, School Board President Draper, Director Superintendent Kingsley, and members of our community. Tonight, we will be discussing updates regarding the PSD strategic plan and present the District 25-26 Unified Improvement Plan for board approval. The PSD DAC District Accountability Committee did vote and is recommending the UIP as written to the Board of Education, okay? I'll be joined later by some colleagues, Assistant Superintendent Dr. Tracy Guile, Dr. Ann C. Nelson, Dr. Julie Chaplin. Liz Davis will be joining me this evening to help out with this presentation, but I'll kick us off in the beginning. Before I really kick off, I want to tell you it's a real pleasure to be here tonight. This is important work. The team that's worked on this is large. There's 30-plus leaders in our system that know this plan as well as we do because they were that involved in it. So we're just the voices of the plan tonight, and I'm really pleased to be here with you. Okay. So PSD staff in our community have made progress in some key areas, okay? We'll start our presentation by reviewing some specific actions PSD engaged in during the 24-25 school year. And we'll highlight some associated outcome data following up on that that illustrates movement toward the district ends. Then we will shift gears and we'll highlight some of the important steps and the key components of the 25-26 Unified Improvement Plan. So we're going to start by looking back. What did we do and how did it land? And then we're going to look forward on what are we planning to do next, okay? We'll finish our presentation just by engaging the board with questions and answers, and we have a whole team here that'll be joining me for that. Okay. So the, I'm going to flip this real quick. The strategic plan and the UIP, they kind of do a dance together, right? And they move together, they develop together. And truly in PSD, a lot of districts say, you know, it's not going to be a checkbox and a compliance thing and that we're going to do the thing, put it, you know, submit it to the state, and then we'll look at it again next year. But we actually are living that. We really aren't just writing a document and putting it aside until the following year. It's a true improvement cycle that we're engaged in, and we have the strategic plan and the UIP. The UIP is required, the Unified Improvement Plan. I'm just going to be saying UIP a lot tonight, I'm sure we all will. It's required by the state of Colorado. It has some parameters to it. The strategic plan is a document we choose to do in Pooter School District, and they definitely are tied together and they work together, basically, right? So they're not, for our staff and our community, it's not like we have these two different plans with two different sets of action items, okay? So that's an important piece to be aware of. Throughout the UIP, you see action steps and you see deliverables. So we're very explicit about what we're working on and when we want to get it done and how we intend to get those types of outcomes that we're sharing, okay? And that explicitness and staying with the three priorities that Superintendent Kingsley, I think, mentioned earlier tonight of literacy, graduating with options, and mental health and belonging, that focus and that stability on those three high priorities has really allowed the system to organize itself towards making headway, making gains in that space. So I want to publicly acknowledge and thank the Board of Education, Superintendent Kingsley, and my colleagues in leadership, as well as our system of schools and principals, school leaders, teachers, and everybody on holding to those priorities so that we can organize ourselves and see measurable progress. So just a note of gratitude, okay? Okay. So as we move on into this process and outcomes highlights, there's an awful lot that PSD has to be proud of. I'm going to highlight a few key areas. This is not the monitoring report, right? So we'll do the monitoring report in a couple months, and it'll go into much more depth on many more indicators that are important to monitoring our district ends and how we're making progress. But we will tonight pick a few highlights of some data that are tied very directly to those three priorities in our strategic plan and UIP and illustrate how we are in fact making progress in those spaces. And we're doing that through a collective action of our whole system, which we'll talk about throughout the evening, okay? So I'm going to start with the data side of the slide and then move to the highlighted action side, okay? Whenever I hear presentations, I love to hear first, what are the outcomes? Like, are you actually moving needles? Once you show me that, now you've got my interest. I'm curious, how are you doing that? What would you say some of the key components are? I'm generally not as interested in conversations that go the other direction because the outcomes, there's a lot of systems that actually can't show you the outcomes to back up the long laundry list of things that they're doing, which I'm sure is all important and great work. But it's nice to start with outcomes. So we're just going to do one slide for each one of these priority areas, okay? So literacy, we picked DIBELS K-3, DIBELS 8, K-3 data for the last five years. And the numbers you're seeing in that line graph are the percentage of students that are meeting or exceeding what they call the benchmark expectations, right? Like grade level expectations. When you see that slide and you see the direction of that line graph, that story is pretty clear. This is data gathered for all of our K-3 students, so that's quite a few students. And you can see that we've got a consistent increasing trend in that data, which is what we want, obviously. I'm not showing you the slide, but I'm verbally going to tell you that when we pull that exact slide for the CMAS data on literacy, that's grades three through eight, so it's a different grade range, it's a different test, we see a similar, consistent, increasing trend. So it kind of validates this data, DIBELS 8, CMAS. When we pull the data on PSAT 9 and we pull it on SAT 10 and SAT 11, that data also shows this increasing trend. I'm just using the DIBELS to kind of make it visible. On the bottom half of that graph, and before I move on, I just have to say, that outcome is something we should be super proud of as a system. And it's only due to the work, the collective work of our teachers, our students, our families, our principals. Like so many people are involved in this story over these years to get our data to move in the direction it's moving. And as you know, we're like a high achievement, high growth district, and we're moving in the right direction. When you look at the bottom bar charts there, what you notice, I think pretty quickly, is that the lowest category that's called well below benchmark is decreasing year after year. So the percentage of students, K-3, that are in that lowest category is decreasing. Meanwhile, collectively, the top two categories, above benchmark and at benchmark, are increasing over that same set of years. And you can notice that the below benchmark set of bar graphs there is staying pretty consistent at about 10%. Can everyone see that? So where is the shift happening? Where is the shift happening for the kids that were well below? They're shifting up to higher categories, right? And we've got students moving in the right direction. When we go through the monitoring report, we'll go through that in more depth, okay? On the highlighted action side, I'd start out with the bottom two bullets because I know the board's super familiar with that. We made a big investment, I say we, you, the board, boldly made a big investment at a time when it was hard to make big investments in literacy, which matters to our community, right? And what you did is you invested in the science of reading. And we did the K-5 literacy curriculum adoption, and then we did the 9-10. And then we have other work going on in the system that's really targeted with staff training. And you got a board presentation, I think it was back in February, around our work around learning challenges in reading, specifically dyslexia, right? And so we've been investing in staff training and various aspects of targeted support for the kids that need us most when it comes to learning to read. But we've also invested heavily as a district in what we call our universal tier-one reading instruction because we believe in that approach, that when you provide good science of reading instruction, tier-one for all students, you're going to minimize the number of students who need that targeted support. But our strategy is at the same time, we're increasing our ability to support meaningfully the kids that are struggling. So we're doing both, right? So there you go. That's basically what those three bullets are running through. And again, we can go into more depth down the road, but that's a good high-level coverage of that. Okay. Graduating with options, the second big priority. You've seen graphs like this, some of you have been on the board longer than others. In the past, prior to four years ago, and I'm going to name it, okay? Just, and I realize that graduation rates are a lagging indicator because it's a culmination of a long journey, but it really starts in the ninth grade, whether students are kind of earning those credits or not, right? But over these last, you can see these last three classes of 22, 23, and 24, we had a dramatic jump. Almost more importantly, in my opinion, is the stability of those three years compared to the instability of the prior years that we're just showing here. And if we showed more years than that, I think a lot of board members would remember it was quite like a bouncing ball, like what that graduation rate was coming in at. So two things happened around the class of 2022. We got stability, which means our process became more consistent in our system. And we moved the bar up quite a bit on what the graduation rate is. This day, we're looking at this line graph for these six years of data, or is that seven years of data, is representing all of the PSD student body. We have additional data that shows by various groups of students, for instance, English language learners, that their graduation rates have also shown dramatic improvements over this last couple of years, the same last, like, let's say, four to five years, right? Not to sidestep this, we have other groups of students, like students that receive support with an IEP that have not had these types of graduation rate increases, right? And a statement was made earlier in the boardroom that's correct, that our graduation rate for that important group of students is below the state's graduation rate. So I'm being honest with you and celebrating that we see some data that definitely indicates improvements that have been sustained in our system-wide. Some of those improvements are showing up for various subgroups that we care a lot about and we track and we try to monitor and support. And in places where not where we need to be yet, and there's still an opportunity, obviously, there, right? But that's the nature of a strategic plan, continuous improvement in UIPs. You're not just looking for where, you know, you're looking for what I just described, actually. Are the needles moving for the things you said you were going to impact? And if it's still one of your priorities, where is it that it's not there yet that you're still working on? I'm just trying to express those components exist in these data, okay? The highlighted actions, this increased the availability of post-secondary articulated programs and increased student family awareness of interest-aligned college, career, credit, degree, certification opportunities in PSD. We have data on that that shows that we've had about a 20% increase in the number of students that are enrolled in career tech ed, you know, pathways. And those pathways lead to the opportunity for a nationally recognized credential. So we've had about a 20% increase in the number of CTE pathway enrollments that occurred over these last two years. That's been intentional. In fact, Superintendent Kingsley, you said in your opening remarks earlier, I loved it, something to the effect of, the results that we see aren't random, they're by design. So when we see those kind of numbers moving in the direction we expect and we know we can point back to specific things, and by the way, we could go into more depth, but I'm keeping, I have to go kind of high level with this tonight. But, but yeah, those are the big actions we're taking that are kind of yielding some results, okay? We move on to mental health and belonging. Again, there's a line graph, this time it's only three years of, it appears to be three years. It's really over a six-year span, right? Because the data I'm showing you to start off with is the Healthy Kids Colorado Survey data. Super important dataset for PSD. We're one of the districts that has all of our middle schools and all of our high schools participate in that, which makes us a little unusual. But that's because how much we value that data to get that information, right? And so the top line graph is colored blue, and it's the percentage of students who indicated that they purposely hurt themselves in the past 12 months. Those percentages are scary high for all three years, right? Hence the, we've got more work to do. We have not landed, we have not arrived, and I don't know when we will. But clearly, those numbers are shocking and too high for all of us as adults in this community. The lower graph, our line graph, which is colored orange, is the percentage of students who self-identified in the high school dataset that they were considering suicide. And again, those are shockingly high numbers. We have a lot, we have to attend to this, which we are. And you'll see through our strategic plan and our UIP, reading it and hearing the presentation tonight, that we are directly attending to that. We do see the increases, right? From 26.4% to 15.3%, which is a decrease, which is a good thing. So less students are reporting that they're purposely hurting themselves. And we see a decrease on the bottom line graph in the last, between the last two occasions of that survey, from 21.4% to 11.1. So again, that's a pretty substantial decrease. But that 15.3 and that 11.1, those are shocking numbers. So we have more work to do. What have we been doing? Well, things have changed, policy and processes change at the state and federal level during the last couple of years. And Pooter School District has made sure that we're in alignment with those changes and getting in front of them. So we've done a lot of work with our policies and our practices to make sure that we're aligned with and in front of the best thinking on how to decrease harassment and discrimination in our school setting. We've done that through training of staff specifically. And there's people in the room, Liz Davis, who can speak more specifically to that than I can during the Q and A time, if you're interested, about how many staff and where are we at? Because it's a journey, and we are well underway. We've trained a lot of staff, and again, that work is going to continue. That's not over next year or the year after that. We've also really focused on We've also really focused on, and I think a lot of the board members know that, and having read through the UIP, not just this year, but last year, that we focused on middle school a little bit with fourth and sixth grade. And one of the reasons is the data that we get back indicates that that's a fruitful place for PSD to kind of focus some effort. And again, there's people in the room that can speak even more specifically to that point, okay? So to kind of summarize, policy and practice, you guys said tonight, which was great, somebody commented in the boardroom tonight, you know, policy is just written word, basically. It's really the practice. How do we live that policy? The policy kind of signals the intention and such, but how do we live it, right? So we are working on both policy and practice. We are doing it through staff training, and we are doing it through direct contact with students in a targeted fashion, because we do have limited resources. So we can't do everybody all at once. Okay, so all the data I just ran through, just one slide on each one of those priority areas, and I just picked one good chunk of data that's really a, like a robust data view to indicate we are moving needles in the right direction, and more work is needed. That's the theme, right? This slide is about this concept of disproportionality. As you've listened to everybody on this administrative team speak over the last year and a half to two years, I would say, and especially the last year, you're hearing that word more and more frequently, I think, disproportionality. What do we mean by that? We mean that when we look at students, let's say, students supported with an IEP, and we see that their graduation rate is less than the overall PSD population's graduation rate, that's a disproportionality. Why does that exist? How do we intervene on that? How do we disrupt that, right? If we see a difference between outcomes and achievement for those students who are eligible for free or reduced lunch, like on the slide, the line graphs on my left hand, on the left-hand side for that DIBELS eight K three data, that's a disproportionality. So knowing a student is eligible for free or reduced lunch shouldn't, shouldn't predict where their achievements levels are going to land, right? If it does, that's a disproportionality. That's what it means. So at any rate, we're showing a couple of examples here, and there's a couple of pieces I want to point out real quick. The DIBELS eight data on the left is the same exact picture that I just showed you in the DIBELS eight data for the whole PSD population K three. It's just separated out for those students eligible for free lunch, or free meals, or reduced meals, or not, not eligible for either, right? And what you see are a couple of things, I think. One, those increases in literacy are happening, in fact, for all three of those groups. Like they're all trending in the correct direction up. I can see as well as you can, there's a little bit of drop on that most recent twenty-four, twenty-five, but that overall trend for all three groups is up. The other thing I want to point out, when we say disrupting disproportionality, what would the evidence of that look like? It would look like the change in the distance between the black line and the yellow line. On the left, in two thousand twenty, twenty-one, there was a much bigger gap, 51% to 77% between the achievement levels, the percentage of students that are meeting benchmark on DIBELS eight, between the students who are eligible for reduced lunch and those that weren't. That's a huge gap. When you look off to the right, that gap has shrunk, it's still too big, but to about 12%, right? Instead of, what is that, 26%? 26 down to 12. That, I would say, is evidence at a high level of disrupting disproportionality. The goal would be for that yellow line to keep on climbing, not for the black line to come down until they touch, right? And we want to see the same thing with the red line. Now, the red line has also likewise, we have shrunk those gaps. That's disrupting disproportion, that's what the evidence would look like. We want to see that in graduation rates, we want to see that in our mental health data, we want to see it in our achievement data, we want to see it in the data regarding how many kids are engaging in CTE, you know, nationally recognized credential type opportunities, how many are getting post-secondary college credits while they're here with us, how many students are getting work-based learning experiences, and so on. That's disrupting disproportionality. The graph on the right with graduation rates, that is, I just took our two biggest ethnic groups, just by counts, okay, as an example. And again, what I'm trying to show is that Hispanic students, as a group, have also enjoyed or produced that same type of graduation rate jump for those same years. So that, that graph parallels the one I showed you for the full PSD population. And I'm, I'm just showing how it also shows up for Hispanic students, not just overall. And once again, it's a good example, because those gaps have actually shrunk a little bit. So we're moving in the right direction in terms of disrupting disproportionality. As my colleagues talk up here tonight, all the work we're doing and everything we're talking about, what we've written and what we're trying to, you know, breathe life into in a collaborative way with our system, it's all about these types of big outcome pictures, and that's why I want to tell you thank you tonight. Thank you to the board, thank you Superintendent Kingsley. I, I believe that we could switch out every strategy we have with another good strategy that's evidence-based. And we might still be looking at these kind of outcome improvements. Because what I think I believe is, it was, it's the focus and staying focused on the same priorities so that everybody in this room is elevating those priorities in their language every day. And our colleagues out there in the schools, the principals, the APs, the teachers, the bus drivers, everybody is able to name those, know what they are, so that it guides their decisions. They make 100 decisions a day, we can never micromanage, right? But if we have a clear vision, which you've given us, if we have a clear vision, everyone can align to that. And that's how I think you get results like what we're looking at tonight. And they're not perfect, we have more work to do, so I'm not up here saying to the whole PSD community, we've arrived, we haven't arrived, but we definitely have evidence that we're on the right track, in my opinion. That's what I think we're looking at. So I will now turn it over to my colleague, Dr. Tracy Guile. And thank you. Thanks, Tracy.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Schmitz. The, the pleasure of getting to talk about the impact that we have on children is incredibly rewarding. And I can't thank this team and community enough for being aligned in the goals and vision that we have for students in our community. They deserve our very best, and so we're hoping tonight that you see the work that we put into the outcomes that every child deserves. So in thinking about the twenty-five, twenty-six vision goals, strategies, and deliverables, Dr. Schmitz teed this up beautifully in terms of talking about the direction. So setting direction remains the same for us. The board has given us the district ends, which then have operationalized wildly important goals within them. We've also picked out these three wildly important goals that drive the actualization of the outcomes that we seek for students in Pooter School District. And so our big ambitious vision is to live our mission every day, that we every, we educate every child every day. And we don't truly actualize that vision until we can say with 100% that all students have reached that benchmark. And so these three goals really leverage going after that all means all and really centering our work on addressing our disproportionate outcomes for students. And so those three wildly important goals that we've been centering on for the last two years have been students with disabilities, multilingual learners, and historically underserved identities exceed a year's growth in a year's time. So the only way to close that gap is to accelerate the growth for the students who need us most. And so that's what that metric represents, is that acceleration, and being very intentional about that. The second goal is increasing our overall graduation rates. The board advised us to increase our metric from 85% had been our goal, to elevate that to 90% and also to close the gaps for students with disabilities, multilingual learners, and those with historically underserved identities. Also, that third bullet is to decrease the number of incidences of harassment and bullying due to ethnicity, or race, religion, gender identity, sexual orientation, disability, physical, and other protected classes by 10%. And so in pursuit of that, we really have data from the Healthy Kids Colorado survey, as well as our connections data, that that is an area of concern for our students that is affecting their mental health and feelings of belonging. So that is a very important goal that we seek to improve upon through the course of our strategic plan and our district unified improvement plan. So in talking about this slide, this slide is really capturing a theory of action that we have with our strategies and deliverables. And so the theory of action really starts with the work of Dr. Richard Elmore, who codified this idea of these three points of content, student instruction, and then task at being the center. So if you think about the student experience and really changing outcomes for kids, the adaptive work happens in the classroom, right? And so throughout our strategic plan, we have been really seeking to try and remove barriers to access. So last year, you heard us talk about developing coherence, also seeking to improve access for all students, to elevate the rigor, and then create environments that were conducive for learning and spaces of belonging for all. And so all of that is leading us now to this space of theory of action of really paying close attention to what's called the instructional core, that content, student, and instruction, and then how the task designs. This is really important, deep work that we do with our teachers in partnership with them to really talk about the influence of all of these things, to create a really high-quality learning experience every single day in every single classroom. So part of that coherence is that students should not have the educational lottery of getting different experiences in different classes, that when we do this in partnership, which is why you see that kind of team component, that's how we create a space of equity where everybody has a high-quality experience. And so the three points of this is that student outcomes improve when we really pay attention to all three points of this triangle, as well as the task in the middle. And so, for example, as Dr. Schmitz talked about, the high-quality instructional materials, that's an example of content. So we have to pay attention to the types of content that we're putting in front of students, that it's rich, that it's complex, that it's aligned to the standards, and that there's space to accelerate within those standards so students continue to experience challenge in their classroom. Also, within that content, students have to be able to experience access to it and have entry points no matter where they're at in their learning journey. So that content has to be accessible to everyone in different ways. And so that is one of the core functions of our strategic plan, is paying attention to content. How are we elevating content? On the other side of the triangle is that instruction. And that's the knowledge and skill of the educator in the room, to be able to take that content and then create experiences, questions, groupings, strategies for how kids experience that content in the room and in a manner that all have access to that high-quality rigorous content. And then that student component is really considering, now that we've elevated those two things, how do we elevate the engagement and relevance for each child so that they can continue to do the heavy lifting in the room? We don't want a sage on the stage if a teacher delivers and imparts knowledge. Students have to experience, embrace, and create meaning out of what's happening in their classroom. So that's what this represents as far as our theory of action as we move forward into the strategies and goals of our strategic plan of this year, is that we have to do all three parts of the triangle at the same time and pay attention to the task that students are experiencing to demonstrate their learning. So as Dr. Schmitz eloquently described, we as an academic cabinet and principal leadership and other stakeholders in our community have been engaged in a cycle of inquiry around our strategic plan, our district improvement plan. We look at results, and then we make adjustments to our strategies. That's essentially a cycle of inquiry, right? So we look at how those three parts of the triangle intersect, and then we analyze what is it telling us so that we make an adjustment here or make an adjustment there. And so what you'll see is a continuation of many of the strategies that we've started with those fine adjustments in content, instruction, and student engagement. So the other piece that you'll hear in the subsequent parts of the presentation, that this focus on, in twenty-five, twenty-six, is really about the universal level, and that's that core experience that every student, if we're doing our work right, has access to on a day-to-day basis. So as you see these next series of slides, think about that as being what every student would, would receive in their experience. And so I'd like to invite Dr. Insoolson to talk about our literacy strategy.
Thank you, Dr. Guile. It is my honor to talk about one of our priorities this year, which is literacy, which you've heard several times. And we believe repetition is great in education, and so you will hear things over and over, but that means we're focused, we're centered, and we're all speaking the same language, which is a good thing. And so, I'm going to start with content, which is on the left side of the screen. And so what Dr. Guile talked about, that we want to guarantee a high-quality instructional environment every day. And so for that to take place, we need to ensure that we have high-quality instructional materials, which you have been a part of and voted on, and gave us an opportunity to really think about, not only how are we embracing evidence-based research, but then how are we implementing it? Because we can adopt things all we want, but we also need to make sure we have a good plan of how we implement them. And so we believe that if all teachers have access to high-quality instructional materials, then every student has access to the grade-level content that they are being afforded in their classroom. Every teacher, in one way or another, is a literacy teacher. I am a former high school science teacher, and initially I thought, I get to just teach science. Wrong. I get to teach high-quality science through quality reading strategies. And so we will work with all of our staff as we have started that journey around disciplined literacy, which is the ability to understand and analyze and produce communication within a specific academic area. So we're talking well beyond English language arts when we talk about high-quality instructional materials. And please remember that when we talk about materials, we're talking about the physical books, novels, but also the digital, which now is a part of our world, and we also need to ensure that we implement effectively and provide supports with that as well. So moving on to the instructional component of making sure that we're using the high-quality instructional materials, we also have to understand at depth, what are Colorado academic standards are asking of us? And as you know, various subjects have been updated over the past, I'd say, five to six years. And we are now ready to really emphasize, and starting with the middle school level, due to high schools and elementary already having some adoptions in place and working through some of their content expectations, we will be working with our middle-level leaders and teachers this year around leading a coherent instruction and grading. And that starts with the standard conversation. And so while educators are working through those two components, it is also really important that our students have evidence-based practices and supports within their classroom. And so we also want to ensure that the scaffolds, and if you think about it, it works just as well in engineering as it does in education, scaffolds are not permanent. They are to help build you up to be able to access the content that you need to access, but they should also start being removed so that you learn your own skill set and that you move through your own educational learning as you need to. And so we will continue to work with our staff on approaches on prevention, as well as ensuring that any gaps that we look in the data helps drive some of those decisions versus just how maybe we just feel about it, or maybe what we might think in that moment. It is really important that our teacher teams get together with our leaders and discuss the evidence that students are providing so that they can provide the appropriate supports and interventions as they move forward. And so we do have some adoptions coming to you, so I'm going to give you a little bit of a prequel. We have a very important K five math adoption getting ready to start. We are also looking at world language level one, so first year in French, Spanish, and German. We are looking at an ELD K twelve newcomer program, which also means students who are served in their first two years in the United States. And then ELD secondary, and instead of giving you acronyms, I'm going to spell it out. So non-English proficient and limited English proficient, according to our state classifications, we'll be looking at a secondary program for them. And then for middle level, we are beginning the process of a social emotional learning program. So that is a huge endeavor. We are also continuing the implementation plans that we have already started. And so these are new adoptions coming around that we have budgeted for so far, and we will provide more information in the future. I just wanted to make sure you were aware that we're still moving forward and making sure that we are hitting those marks around our high-quality instructional curriculum, adoptions, and implementation cycles. So next, I'm going to introduce Dr. Julie So next, I'm going to introduce Dr. Julie Chaplin, and she will go over our next strategy.
Okay, all right. Are you with us? Are we hanging in? All right, well, it's my favorite topic, graduating with options, getting our students, and the great work that we do pre-K through 12 in preparing them for what's after Pooter School District, which is really exciting. And so, again, this really is replicated in the same three areas. So when we are looking at content for students graduating with options, we really are looking at those courses, those programs, the scheduling opportunities, the ways that students access those opportunities, and really ensuring that all students have access to grade-level curriculum and above. We have many advanced courses. We continue to expand those programs, and whether that's through concurrent enrollment, AP, IB, many other of the advanced levels in all of our subject areas. And then in the work-based learning side of it, we absolutely are continuing in that concurrent enrollment piece, but in work-based learning experiences such as internships and apprenticeships. We have several career technical education pathways that have course alignments that really have, we have articulated four-year plans for students from their freshman year to their senior year that helps them plan with their families, all of their courses that they may take that align within one of those areas. And it's really important to highlight that all of these pathway areas are very much prioritized in terms of the current community workforce needs. So we have a Career Technical Education Advisory Committee, and then we have sub-advisory committees on all of the different pathways. But all of those are in a collaboration and really a consultant process with our neighboring districts in northern Colorado and many of our industry partners that help us determine what should we be prioritizing on and what are the needs of our local workforce community and the gaps that they're seeing that we can help prepare our students for future jobs to fill. And so the instruction piece of that really dovetails with the programming. We have these great opportunities, and how do we make sure we have educators that are qualified to provide all those opportunities, whether it be from work-based industry areas that we're bringing onboard to get teacher certifications, or again, in those advanced curricular areas as well. And the big piece of that is how we also work with our educators, counselors, teachers, support staff, to be knowledgeable about what the components are and the requirements are of individualized career and academic plans. These are required by the state. They have been revamped. And in Pooter School District, we go above and beyond again, and we not only provide ICAP planning and opportunities for students at the required levels, but we actually start these lesson plans in a structured progressive way from fifth grade all through their 12th grade. There are articulated lessons. We have specific indicators of when they must be taught throughout the year, and then who's responsible for that, whether it is a universal approach or whether some of the milestones require some additional targeted small-group supports or even individualized supports. And so our educators that are multiple providers all need to have continual training and acknowledgement on how they help support that and how they help, if they're a math content provider, how do they help students connect that content to their future plans and to their ICAPS? And then, of course, the most important part of this is the student. And so how do we then help ensure that students are the center of that individual career and academic plan process along with their families? And so that is something that we have continued to focus on throughout all the years since the ICAP. And that's one of the questions that comes on our connection survey. It's always asking students, do they understand what this is? And we get mixed results, so we are constantly doubling down, trying to think of different ways to embed this to be very meaningful and practical and applicable for students. And so really embedding everything from what they're doing just to understand their skills and how that might pair with careers, but then being really thoughtful about their course-planning process, specifically when they start ninth grade, and how that aligns and dovetails into their future careers. As we think about content and some of the access and the work that we're doing to expand pathways, we have several areas, and I'm sure there'll be questions I'm happy to answer at the end, but I just want to do a high-level overview of some of our really big workforce area needs and some of the pathway expansions. The first is in the healthcare pathway. That is a huge need in our area. And we have several schools that are adding additional front-range courses for medical terminology. We have a whole new healthcare certification option for students in patient tech healthcare. We have medical assistant pathways at the Career Tech Center here, housed at Pooter School District, or Pooter High School up the road. And then we have new internships that are available for students to participate in at UC Health in radiology and lab tech. Those are both really needed and widely sought-after employment opportunities for students. And then internships at Columbine for medical assistance in students. So a lot of these students will take time as the medical assistants as they're working through, some of them associate's degrees, and then in college as they're maybe preparing for other medical careers. The second is the manufacturing pathway. We're excited. We're going to be able to showcase the new digs up here at Pooter High School of our manufacturing, advanced manufacturing facilities. And we'll be promoting all of that in an open house. But we've also been partnering with Ames Community College. We started that partnership last year and continuing to expand courses and credits for that, for the P-Tech program and the Career Tech Center program. And then the CTE Advisory Committee is looking to implement extended industry certifications in this manufacturing area. We have a construction pathway, another big need as we see the housing building continues here in northern Colorado, is around the state. But we have schools adding in more of the geometry and construction programs. Pooter High School just built two houses. They partner with our, you know, local Habitat for Humanity Habitat for Community program. And then we also have adopted a new curriculum that is from the Home Builders Institute that really aligns with industry certifications in construction. And finally, I'd be remiss if I did not highlight our alternative cooperative education program expansions. And that program, those opportunities are for our students with disabilities. Some of them are in high school. Most of these are outside of the high school setting, so they're in their transition programs from 18 to 21 years old. And they're expanding, we have new project search opportunities for students to work within Pooter Valley Hospital. And then within our high school programs, we've expanded to a couple other locations that did not have these programs. And so those are some really great opportunities for expansion that really dovetail with the needs of workforce in our community. So look forward to any questions you have at the end. And I'm going to now bring up our senior executive director of Student Services, Ms. Liz Davis, as she carries us home into the mental health and belonging.
Okay, thanks, Julie. Thank you. So how are we all doing? We regulated? Are we connected? Are we engaged? You good? Anyone need a break? You're good. Okay, no breaks. Let's go. Okay. So you're going to hear some language in this space that's very similar to language that you already heard around alignment, and you'll hear some of the repetition of the tiers and the focus on the universal instruction. So the content in mental health and belonging, our focus, is really focusing on the evidence-based social-emotional learning aligned to CASL standards. And those are provided at every level with an emphasis, starting, you heard, at the middle school level. And I'm going to share a little bit about why middle school in just a minute. But CASL is a collaborative for academic, social, and emotional learning. And they've been leaders in this SEL space for years. And they're a leading organization that promotes SEL in schools and communities. But really, they look to integrate, right, that social-emotional skills alongside academic instruction, right? Recognizing that these competencies work together to support student success and well-being. And the way we in the schools conceptualize CASL and adopt that a bit is we call it the CASL V. So I thought I'd share a little, does anyone know the CASL V? Okay, we're going to learn new instruction tonight, so bear with me. So when you think of the CASL V, we think about self-awareness, self-management, social awareness, relationship skills, and responsible decision-making. And the beauty about CASL is that they really span all developmental levels. When you think about the CASL V, you can think about that for high school. You can also think about that, say, at the preschool level a bit, right? And into elementary. So it spans every level. So our focus, you know, our focus on middle school, there's a reason for that, and we think about our data. So in Student Services, our seventh grade, so for behavioral referrals, seventh grade is the highest for us. And when you think about suicide risk screeners that we do in our district, and in fact, we've done about, last year we did over 1,300 as a district, 70% of those screeners occur in grades five through nine. We want to focus on middle school, and we're so grateful that we're in a space to do that at PSD. So sixth and seventh grade as well pop as our highest suicide risk screeners. And we can get you the numbers on that. So when we move along and think about instruction, staff, our PSD staff will use those PBIS systems. I'm going to tell you what that is in a minute, right, Brian? That's right. No more acronyms. We'll spell them out. Staff will use PBIS systems and practices that are trauma-informed, restorative, and culturally-affirming, which create connection and belonging, communicating to students that they are an asset, not only in the classroom, in the school, in their schools, and in our community. So PBIS is called Positive Behavior Interventions and Supports, if you didn't know that. Many of our staff and teachers do know this and utilize that language. But it's a prevention-based framework for organizing evidence-based behavioral supports into an integrated continuum that enhances academic and the social-emotional outcomes for students. PBIS is a framework used in schools to create positive school climates and improve student behavior through proactive, evidence-based strategies. Some of us have been following the folks, I remember going to trainings a long time ago, Rob Horner and George Segai. We kind of geek out about PBIS a little bit. However, we love this work. We're excited to engage in our universal systems. So also, the framework typically involves multiple tiers of support from school-wide positive behavior programs to more intensive interventions for individual students who need extra assistance. So we're excited about this work. So when you think about our student experience and what they will experience, they will be experiencing those evidence-based supports. Think again about the CASL V and those systems, climate and culture in their buildings. So making sure those supports are provided to students to regulate their emotions, develop positive relationships, and experience a sense of belonging throughout their day. Prevention-based frameworks are critical in not only creating a sense of connectedness and belonging, but also, as we know, disrupting those incidents of bullying and harassment that we're trying to do too. So we're excited about the work ahead. Am I changing the slides? Oh, okay, thanks. Okay. Okay. So you first talk about tiers. But before I talk about some of these tiers, I want to remind us about MTSS. It was named in the UIP intentionally. So multi-tiered system of supports is our umbrella framework. We talk a lot about that in the UIP. It's our comprehensive approach that integrates multiple components to support all students, including academics, behavior, social-emotional learning, and attendance, all organized in the same three-tiered structure. There's no other structure. We're using this structure. We're excited for that. So you'll see kind of a triangle on, you know, this on its side a little bit. And we call these, and just a reminder for us, Tier One is our universal expectations and supports for all students. It's that universal instruction. And we'll provide that to 100% of our students. We know 80 to 85% of our students will have success in that space, and that's wonderful. And we will layer on additional support as needed in the targeted and tier-two area. And 10 to 15% of our students will access supports in that area. We know more students that need more individualized instruction. 1 to 5% of our students will access support in Tier Three. We know this, and our systems are built to support all of our students in this space. Yes, I'm, yes. So how they all work together, we can think about our academic interventions, PBIS, SEL programming, addressing social-emotional needs. We all use the same three-tiered structure, use data-driven systems, as well as lean into prevention and early intervention. And this framework helps support that for us. So the big picture, when we think of MTSS, we think of it as this complete support system for students. So when schools implement MTSS well, they're addressing, again, the whole child academic. And I'm saying this again for a reason. Academic, behavioral, and social-emotional needs, using that coordinated tiered support system rather than addressing it separately. So I'm going to talk about some of our deliverables next. So for 2526, our MTSS deliverables include building, again, you're hearing similar language, universal Tier One instruction for both academic and SEB, social-emotional behavioral, including attendance and social-emotional learning, supporting database problem-solving and decision-making, and focusing on our coaching systems with our school-based teams to identify systems, practices, and data for prevention and response. So when we support schools in creating a solid foundation for instruction that reaches every student in academics, behavior, attendance, and social-emotional learning, and as we build our coaching for teams to use data and solve problems and guide school teams in building systems and practices, we do prevent, we will prevent issues and respond and to support the success for all of our students. So we're excited about this work ahead. And Tracy, you want to close us out here?
Yeah.
Appreciate it.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, so just I've got the quick wrap and summary. I so much appreciate the enthusiasm of our team and the really intentional focus and alignment that we strive to do in our 2526 strategic plan as well as our district improvement plan. And that's what it will take for us to disrupt disproportionality and serve the students and families who need us most, as well as all students in our system, is to center our work on that and to maintain a focus on those priority areas and that small set of objectives that we strive to implement with coherence across the system. So with that, that concludes our presentation. And open it to questions or comments from the board.
Thank you so much. That was incredible. I just appreciate the in-depth that you went into, the cohesiveness. That was just, I do have to, and I'm just a point of privilege here. I'm just going to say, you know, this is my last time I get to hear the UIP, and never before in the eight years that I've been on the board have I heard it be so cohesive, so intertwined, and so watching everybody work together and knowing that this is about the whole child. And I, like, it feels like, it feels like we've arrived at that. And it's such a wonderful feeling, I just have to tell you. I know we haven't arrived at the results of that, but we have arrived at the way we're going to I know we haven't arrived at the results of that, but we have arrived at the, the way we're gonna go about it. And it's just, it's phenomenal. Um, so, I, I just wanna say thank you to you all for that. Um, thank you to the teachers and the teams that have been implementing this on the go. Um, when you look at the numbers, Dwayne, it, phenomenal numbers that we've got. Um, I, again, we are not there yet. I am not saying that we have closed the gaps. But we've identified the gaps, and we're starting to close them now. And that, what a, what an exciting feeling to be able to say, not only do we know what's going on, but we're actually making progress and changing that. So, uh, just fantastic. Uh, with that, Connor, would you like to jump in?
Just a couple of quick questions, sticking with mental health and belonging, Liz. Um, we've heard multiple times pertaining to a grant that has been canceled for us, um, losing, I believe, seven, um, social workers within our buil- within our buildings. I'm not sure if that number is at, how many?
It's, yeah.
Up to twenty-nine over the full program life?
Yeah.
What plans do we have to mitigate some of that disadvantage that we're facing?
Yeah, it's, um, gosh, thanks for asking about the mental health grant. Where are the tissues? No, I just, um, I'm upset. Our stu- you know, where, it's a hard, it was really devastating to learn that the feds had cut these grants. Um, we were part of a cohort that had maybe a hundred of us across the nation. And it was like a third co- it, we, we were maybe second cohort. The Department of Ed got another layer, their own funding in the third cohort. And it's a significant, um, hit to Colorado. Not, and in Larimer County, and here in our community. So we are part of a federal reduction, rescission. They eliminated the grants. Um, we do have this fall. And, um, we are hopeful leaning into, um, we're hopeful to collaborate with our local community, quite frankly, with the reductions federally and with our state. We are really hoping to partner and maybe see some supports. Who knows? But what I will say is that we were able to, unlike other grantees, for instance, CDE was awarded the grant in the spring. They have to get rid of some of the funds by December thirty-first. We have had the benefit of three and a half, I think, three and a half years. We have, um, we, this fall, we will have, you know, close to funding about thirty people in the mental health space. It's a dis- I think we're at twenty-two schools. That's significant. We have ten interns from the university. We are still moving forward. We will have our interns all school year. We have them paid as classified staff, um, this fall through the grant. We are hopeful that maybe with some community partnerships, I don't know, some local supports, maybe we could continue to pay them. Um, but they're doing, they're, they can continue their internship. Here at PSD, we'll have ten students, uh, for the full year. And there's no other internship-to-fellowship program in Colorado, period. We extended the internship experience, and frankly, we built it off of the psychiatric residency um, from Antschutz. So I kind of, when we were writing the grant, we kinda looked at that as a model. Gosh, I wonder if we could support more mental health supports, more students here at PSD if we could extend that internship. No one else has, has done that here in Colorado. And that's a value-add and a benefit here at PSD. So, we're very upset and grateful that we have had this opportunity. So, thank you for asking. And I'm a little passionate about it, if you can't tell.
Other questions? Go ahead, Andrew.
Okay, this is where you're gonna get the data nerd part of me and also where you tell me whether it's in my lane or not. Um, so it, it was a couple of things when looking at the data uh, that come, came to mind and wanted, s- some of it's just to get a sense of how comfortable you are with some of what could probably only be described as the gaps in the data or the challenges in the data. It depends on which data we're looking at, as to whether there's gaps and so forth. So, uh, I'll phrase a, a couple of different things, and then I'll have one other item right at the end there. Um, not expecting answers right now because it's, they're very broad sorts of things. So, when we go through and look at each of the data, there's, there's some things that I certainly have questions about. So looking, and each one sort of has different things. Um, most data has an unknown. Didn't respond to the survey, weren't able to assess, couldn't participate, some of those things like that. And so one of my overall questions is, do we have a good sense of the estimates of, of the groups that participate in one way, shape, or form where appropriate? Uh, and then for the non-participants or the difficult areas, uh, do we have some sense of the striation of the groupings? Uh, so, for instance, I, I look at the, the, the DIBELS data. We have, this is everything that's there. How many didn't participate in that, for example? Um, the graduating with, with options, okay, so we have, um, actually, let me go on to the next one. Uh, where's the graduation data? The graduation rates, how do, uh, do we have the non-graduates, for instance, striated into different groups? Uh, it'd be very easy to think like ESL, uh, would be one of the groups that might have most challenges, or maybe it's perhaps based on culture or any number of other factors. And so just trying to get a, a sense for, for those sorts of things. You're seeing, you know, data-by-data grouping. And then how that informs the third part of it, which is, how are we, because we've done great work with the data we're seeing that are, that's going after probably more like the tier-one type students. There's a lot of where our success, you know, I'm hearing is, is achieving. And now we're getting into the difficult groups. And so, just wanted to get, uh, get a feel, not expecting a detailed plan. Just wanting to get feel, get a feel for, are you starting to get more of a sense of that type of thing? We've heard from the community about sometimes people can't access surveys because of visual issues or ESL and some of those pieces like that. Um, did have a question about when the twenty-twenty-five data is gonna be added to some of them because I saw some of them were through twenty-three and twenty-four. And then for the national harm one, I, I'm very curious if, or is there a national benchmark for the harm one? Recognizing one student trying to harm themselves is enough already. But how do we compare nationally? And then I think the only other thing that I didn't see was, um, when we're thinking about actually starting the dyslexia screening. Recognizing we don't have all the tools in place with all the training to address it within the system, but at least start getting that screening broad scale. And that may be another, a rookie thing, because I think you're well into it somewhat. I just want, I'd love to see us get to that a hundred percent.
So maybe we can tag this.
Loads of, loads of details there.
So we won't go into the weeds like you've asked us not to. But I'd like to take a shot at just answering a few of the thoughts that I just heard expressed that are on the data side of things. And then I wanna turn over to Tracy maybe to talk real quickly to give an update about where we're at with this screening for dyslexia, because that's an important topic. So let me start with the data one. I heard a couple of themes in there. First one, I wanna make sure we're all aware of. PSD does, in fact, demonstrate, you know, we have all of our data visualization tools online that absolutely allow drill down by all the different kind of classical groups you would look at, including things that you typically don't see out there, like students that are, um, candidates and get services with McKinney-Vento, like homeless students. We, we show groupings of students that lots of districts actually don't. So one, one point I wanna make is, we are very, very transparent. Drill down by school, by subgroup, by grade level, by assessment, by all these things. And we have that for the connections data. We have it for achievement and growth. We have it for graduation. We have it for attendance. We have it for dropout data. I mean, we just went to town. This was probably about a five-year process. I went to IT department and lots of other players who have made that happen. Okay, so there's that part. I also heard in your question, uh, wondering about things like, we do our connection survey, for example. And we have other surveys we use, like Healthy Kids Colorado. And all these surveys, like those two biggies, there's other ones we do, family engagement and others. But let's focus on those two. Um, your concern, which is a really valid concern that we're well aware of too, is how do we ensure we're getting the voices from as many people as possible, even those people for whom maybe the standard call doesn't work well, right? So for, as an example, in the connection survey, we have family liaisons distributed throughout our system who really are super helpful. And the schools have a pretty good idea, because they're working with the kids and the families, which students, which families may need some additional assistance to be able to access that type of an instrument, like a survey, right? And so, um, David Ottenreth, who's sitting right here, is one of our directors. He, he kinda oversees that group, but they're tremendously helping that. So we do what we can at space. The state of Colorado really runs the, um, Healthy Kids Colorado survey, and they likewise have some procedures in place to try to help people access their survey, okay? Um, I also want to mention that when you asked a really good question about drilling in, like you and I are gonna be good friends, I can tell for the, for the time that I'm gonna be left here, because you, you're asking good questions, like many board members do. You see data and like, you see one good display and it, it raises five more questions, right? We have all the data you're asking about. When you, when you bring up, do we have data on the students who didn't graduate? Can we slice and dice that data? Can we learn from it? Absolutely, and the answer is yes. Do we know which students didn't complete both, let's say, the pre and the post on the DIBELS eight? We absolutely know exactly which students. So are there disproportionately's in different subgroup categories on who's accessing and who's not? I hear your question is asking, can we track that? Can we explore that? Can we work with that? The answer is yes. So, without getting in the weeds, the answer is yes on, we, we have strategies to get as much student, community, voice as we can whenever we do these things, assessments, surveys, and so on. We absolutely have the mother load of data on the back end so that we can, in fact, one of the reasons we deliver surveys the way we do is because we can tie together data often with our vast data sets behind the scenes for these good reasons. So we're aware of what voices aren't we capturing, right? And a classic technique, real quick, that some institutions will use is, uh, focus groups. Like you follow up and you create purposeful focus groups centered on those voices that you think from a part of the community you may not have gotten, right? That's just a different avenue. So I'll probably stop there on the data questions. I can tell we're gonna be good friends, and we're gonna have a few coffee chats with your blessing, which I'll look forward to. And I'm gonna turn over to Tracy Guile, Dr. Guile, if you want to. Let them know where we're at with the universal screening.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah. So, um, just to follow up with, um, one of the data sets. So our DIBELS data, um, probably the data has the highest participation because we, um, are compelled to by the state. So the state pays for the DIBELS assessment for us. In turn, we give, you know, the results to them. And so there are very few exceptions for students who would not be expected to take the DIBELS assessment that have to be in alignment with the state, um, guidelines. So we can't excuse a student from taking that test, that it is part of a requirement and obligation that we have so that the state can also monitor their high priority, which is foundational literacy and science of reading. So they have a high, um, investment for us in, in capturing that data. And so that's sort of the one data set that has the greatest participation, whereas you'll see, um, participation rates for some of other assessments like CMAS would not be quite as high. Um, as far as the dyslexia screener, so, yes, the, um, uh, House, um, the legislature and House passed the screening bill, which is fantastic. And we were already on that path of exploring what our screening assessment would be. And so, um, we intend to pilot one of the sub-tests that is available to us from Amplify. So we have to coordinate with Amplify, who, um, produces the DIBELS assessment for us, to, um, access the sub-test that we're gonna pilot in four of our schools this year as a possible screener. The state right now is lagging in terms of identifying what they would recommend for screeners. But we're gonna take a step forward in this space this year to pilot up four of our schools' dyslexia screener.
Thank you. I, I, and again, I, just trying to get a sense for your understanding of, of the various points of the data and things like that. And I appreciate your insight, uh, because it sounds like there's a lot of things going on and we're on the good path, is, is what I'm hearing. So I like that.
Thank you. Yeah, go ahead, Kevin.
Um, if we could go to slide eight.
I don't know which one, slide eight.
Keep going, I'll tell you. That one.
That one.
Yeah. And I like the theme of disrupting disproportionality, so I'm gonna stick with that for a moment. Um, uh, when Dwayne presented this several board meetings ago, um, please don't take my comments as cherry-picking negatives. Uh, that's not my intention at all. Um, but like Dwayne and like everyone in this room, I'm interested in a big question, which I don't wanna answer right now. But one thing that I think should guide us too is, it's the first one I wrote down. One of the major areas of growth we face as a district in each of these three ends that we can be and should be addressing in twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six. I know that's work that's embedded in what you're doing, so I think that may be an ongoing conversation. But I'm very interested in your thoughts, but given the hour, I've got a specific question that I wanna draw attention to. Um, so the first, it's more of an observation than a question. But for the first part of slide eight, the outcome data on DIBELS eight K through three, it, it's something I think we've all know and, and live, but it's, it's nice to have numbers that illustrate this. One, I do credit the upward trajectory of those three classifications. Uh, to dispel the notion that there is no such thing as an achievement gap in twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six that's socioeconomic-based, I think we've got numbers that disprove that. So there's more work to be done. And I'm mindful of that as we're, again, thinking big picture, policy governance, about some of the other things that we're, that we'll need to be discussing. And I'm, I'm, I'm thinking specifically about, uh, free meals for all and some of the legislative efforts and what we need to spend some of our money on, just a comment. Uh, the second part of that, the graduation rates, this is a hyper-specific question, but, um, I'm encouraged to see, um, again, more of an upward trajectory among our Hispanic students' graduation rates. My question though is, do we anticipate any drops in that, uh, in that, um, graduation rate for our Hispanic students in twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six with what we're seeing with immigration, um, nationally? Do we have data where we can start pulling attendance rates now and start analyzing that? And if so, what can we do proactively as a government, seem as a board, as a district to help support, um, that population of our students?
Really appreciate, do you, let me, let me, yeah. No, wait, I like the eagerness that we all, this is, this is a really important conversation. Um, and I, I would wanna be muted in my thoughts to not stoke fear, but I think it's important that we're honest. Our at-risk marginalized communities have always been at risk. They have always been marginalized historically in our country. And that is amplified right now. And I think we would be kidding ourselves if we were sticking our head in the sand and say that they are not being psychologically, cognitively, all sorts of different, financially impacted, everything that is happening in our society today. And as we are brave and courageous and proud of the results that we've had, all of the legislative changes that are happening, and I'm not trying to be political here. Yeah, and I, I, I know that, but I, I just, I wanna be measured and just say it out loud. Um, it rubs up and creates a lot of inertia with what we're saying matters most, which is disrupting disproportionality. You could look at any community in this country today, and disproportionality exists where you can predict outcomes based upon people's race, their sexual orientation, their gender identity, their abilities. And we are trying to be really courageous in a community that has a white dominant culture. And so, we are measured and worried, um, and we are positioned in some ways to be responsive. I'm really, really proud that, uh, we measured in January whether we were gonna lose a lot of students last, uh, January of twenty-twenty-five. And I really believe because of the work of David and Liz and our family liaisons and the trust, the trusted adults that are in our schools, our teachers, our principals, families kept sending our children, their children to our schools. Now whether that's gonna change at the start of the school year will remain to be seen, but we will be heavily monitoring that for sure. And we have systems and structures and human resources right now that are dedicated to go out to families to make sure that we're building trust with them and trying to figure out ways to get them back and re-engage with our school. Um, and that's really, really important. You know, our school system today, on average, receives approximately thirty million dollars a year in federal funding. The grants that we talked about earlier, uh, that supported the twenty-nine social work positions, they're supplemental on top of that, right? So we lost six-point-one million remaining dollars in that nine-point-two-million-dollar grant. There's no way that we can remove six-point-one million dollars, and we don't think that that's going to have an impact. One of our community commentators who talked about the, the impact of that- One of our community commenters who talked about the, the impact of that fellow, she was speaking truth. It is going to have an impact. We are all gonna have to do more. It's not just teachers. It's our mental health team. It's our principals, our parents. We're all gonna have to try to figure out how to do more with less. And that's gonna be really difficult in our community where we've come to deserve and expect a certain level of service. And as leaders, myself, in partnership with the leadership at CSU, the city of Fort Collins, the county, UC Health, we're all going out and having shared presentations to have some level of a shared awareness with our community about these changes while also leading us to some form of acceptance that there's no cavalry coming. We don't see a support structure that's going to help replenish some of these things. And we need to be honest about that. We want, like we, Liz Davis is a human money machine. If there's anybody who can find a grant, it's her and her team. But grants are not long-term dollars, right? So we're in that space where we're wrestling with these different things. And, and make no mistake about it, that $30 million that we do have, they are traditionally dedicated to supporting our most marginalized communities. Those four areas of investment are special education, IDE dollars. You as a board have already lobbied and know that that's significantly underfunded. And I believe that's probably the most stable of all of our federal dollars. It represents about six to seven million. Head start programming. We support 400-plus children ages zero to four years old in about 76 classrooms in this district. There was signals from the federal government that Head Start would go away. And then there were changes, well, we'll bring it back, but we're gonna change the registration processes to make sure people identify potentially themselves in terms of their immigration status. That has yet to be, play out, but we're monitoring that closely. Child nutrition services, Director Havelde, you appropriately brought up meals, the Healthy Meals for All Act in Colorado that was passed two years ago, significantly underfunded. And we anticipate there may be one or even two ballot measures on this coming ballot in November to fully fund that particular program. But what many Coloradans and many people in our local community don't know is that we get $7 million in federal funding to support child nutrition services. And everyone's dollars goes to paying for food. So if that money is at risk, where do we take that money to make sure all of our kids get the meals that we're saying that they deserve and should get? And then the last piece is our entitlement grants, which are traditionally supporting students, migrant students, students with multilingual learners. It's supporting five of our elementary schools where they're located with where our highest concentrations of poverty are in our community. And they withheld dollars in the amount of almost 1.8 and then they released them. So this, the changing landscape is shifting by the moment. And it's incredibly destabilizing, not just from a financial standpoint, but from just a human psychological standpoint. The level of uncertainty, not just for the families that we serve, but even our employees and whether jobs will be there. It's creating people having to look to see if there's potentially something else available. And we heard again about those social worker positions. So the reality is significant in a community that in difficult economic times previously, and I've only lived in, I love living here. It's just such a wonderful place. But the story goes that our community once was recession-proof. And I think we're learning based upon the major employers. I mean, we're the third largest employer in our community. Those times are shifting right now. We're gonna have, use this as an opportunity to have an entrepreneurial mindset and think differently about our businesses and not do it in isolation of our city, of our county, of UC Health, CSU. We need to figure out ways to come together to leverage shared resources and do things differently. Because I do believe there are no signals that we are gonna experience a rebound in this space anytime soon. And that is only further exacerbated by the loss of, you know, declining enrollment in our community and our school district. We are anticipating losing about 500 students this year compared to a year ago. That represents the fifth largest elementary school in this district. I sat on this day, it's a year ago, and said, we are anticipating losing 500 students from '23, '24. And we did. We're losing an entire school worth of children a year, which is only further accelerating these various challenges. I am really proud that we have extraordinary leadership. We have a lot of resource in this system. 4A was transformative on the Capitol side of the house. We have family liaisons like systems no, I've never seen. The army of family liaisons, and I say that, you know, just to, it might not be the right term, but they, they're mobilized and they're trusted amongst our families. The mental health team that we have here, there are other districts that surround us in the front range that would just do anything to be able to have those types of resources. So we are very blessed in a lot of different ways. So I'm not trying to plead as the superintendent that our cupboards are bare. But we are experiencing pain points that are very real, they're very new, and they're all happening at one time. And they're all happening to all of the different organizations in our community because we have a lot of government agencies here, education and healthcare. And that's something that we're all spending a lot of time as executive leaders trying to learn from each other, be measured. But we need to be real and honest about how we educate our populace about these changes because it's, the way that we're all receiving content right now is just really difficult for people to make sense of what's what. So I just, I really appreciate the question. I'm sorry for the long-winded answer. But I think it's important for us to educate people on the changing landscape and the cost of that.
Thank you for that. And if I could just say too, I think what you have stated only amplifies the need for what you are doing here. It only amplifies when, I, I look at the slide that says our big ambitious vision. And that's what this is. This is a big ambitious vision that we have. And it's for all kids to succeed. And it's not just to succeed academically, but to succeed as a whole child. And what you articulated are the things that families and children are going through on a daily basis that can affect attendance. It can affect academic abilities. It can affect concentration. All of those things do not happen separately. And so what makes me so proud of, of the work that you all are doing is the fact that you realize that, you, you see that. And to continue to disrupt this disproportionality, even under the circumstances that we are under now, this is what we'll have to do. We will have to make sure that our big ambitious vision continues and that we are looking at the entire child, making sure that if they're there, why are they not there? Is there something we can do to help them to get to the school? Once they're at the school, have they been fed? Let's make sure that they have something in their belly so before they go and start to learn. If they're struggling learning, what is it that's distracting them? Is it something that is organic? Is it something that is, that we can help change? If it's a stress-related or a, you know, we don't know something, something from outside is, is, is in, working its way in? There's so many ways in which a child can be dysregulated. And what you're doing here is making sure that they are regulated to make, to be able to learn. And that is huge. And I think it only, like I said, I think it's only amplified, this work is only amplified by the fact that we are in such times that it, this is so needed. And so again, I, I just want to say thank you for that. Go ahead, Kevin.
Sorry, I appreciate all of that. I promise you I do, and I don't want to move beyond. And it's, it's getting a little late, so my brain is a little foggy. But do, do we have an answer at least for the attendance inquiry for our Hispanic students? Are we gonna, are we monitoring that? Is there anything that we can do other than beyond what we're doing?
Yes, I, I think we have to start school, right? So to get our first baseline of where we are compared to a year ago. I was really encouraged by not seeing any dips in our attendance rates for that population. Now, I will tell you, I have concerns about our system absenteeism rate as a district. So like we need people to be in school. So please don't, like, that's really, really important. We want people, all students, in school every single day. That's the core message here. But once school starts, we can see if we're seeing any changes in that data. And absenteeism, chronic absenteeism is a part of our strategic plan. And so it's things that we would monitor anyway.
Appreciate it. And I didn't want to minimize the importance of the conversation you had. And there was a reason I was asking that question too. So I appreciate you both addressing that. And thank you for the work that you're doing. Let's focus on what we can control.
And we, we do monitor. So right now, we're in this period of monitoring enrollment. So there's the projection and then there's, you know, current state of what we're seeing enrollment-wise. And so that day-to-day enrollment, the first benchmark, as Superintendent Kingsley said, is that first week of school to be able to reconcile, like, who told us they were coming to school at the next grade level in the spring and who actually showed up? So that period of reconciling, those couple of things will take some time over the next two weeks. And that will start to give us a clearer picture of who moved and that we know where their location is. And then who do we not know? And so really centering on that group of students that we don't have a record of where they went, right? And so that's gonna start that level of inquiry around, there might be a root cause that is a theme for why certain groups of students or individual students did not attend our schools when they had planned to. And so that's gonna take us a little bit of time to get that data.
If I can just add one thing for saying that, Dr. Guile, I really appreciate that. I do think we are going to need to continue to be curious around what our early enrollment data tells us simply because of the extreme heat that we're dealing with. And this is, I mean, we've had that protocol in place now for at least a year. We not have to use it because Mother Nature was cooperative a year ago. But I would anticipate that this extreme heat is going to have, some, it's gonna rub up against our daily attendance for lots of different reasons, whether it's childcare needs, whether it's, yeah. So we'll just need to continue to unpack that. But I, the team provides weekly reports around school enrollment. And so we're, it's something that is very important to us.
All right, other questions? Okay. Well, then seeing none, may I get a motion? Go ahead, Kevin.
I move the board approve the 2025, 2026 Unified Improvement Plan, UIP, as presented.
Can I get a second? Thank you, Scott. All right, Andrew, can you please call the vote?
Jim Brokisch.
Aye.
Kristen Draper.
Aye.
Connor Duffy.
Aye.
Kevin Havelde.
Aye.
Scott Schoenbauer.
Aye.
Andrew Spain.
Aye.
Jessica Zamora.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
All right, thank you. Thank you all for the great presentation.
Thank you, team.
All right, and believe it or not, this meeting is now adjourned at 8:59 PM. Have a good night, y'all.